All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, March 5th, City Council meeting. I will have our city clerk start with our will call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Rehn.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Rosina Ferro.
Here.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor Howe, can you lead us in the pledge, please? Okay. Sorry, the flag was switched on us. We're good now, I think. All right. Councilmember Lamb, would you mind reading the land acknowledgement?
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All right, any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. First up, we will have public comment. We'll start in the room, and then we move to anyone online that has signed up early enough. So I believe Kaylee is first. Yeah. So just name, city of residence, and you have three minutes.
Great. My name is Kaylee Jake, and I live in Smamish. I'm here tonight to give public comment for the Town Center Plan and Development Code Amendment. I'm also the founder and executive director of The Garage. We're a teen center in Issaquah. And I just wanted to give you a little background. We are a space for high school kids to gather with their friends, access resources and programming as needed. We've been around for five years in Issaquah. Just a couple of things to note, there have been teens that helped us establish what The Garage was going to be, kind of envision it from the beginning, and then they have been along with us the whole way. They hire all of our staff with us, they develop all of our policies and procedures, our equity statement, and many of our events come from them. But any teen that walks in the door can program the space. They're in charge of what happens on a day-to-day basis. Speaking of them, in FY '23, we served more than 690 teens, and that was more than 17,200 visits in a year. So we're seeing around 100 students a day that come through The Garage. We provide for them everything from counseling. We have two counselors on staff, we have a case manager, so that person can navigate systems for them. And then we just launched our Host Home Program, which is a program that can keep teens in their community when they're unhoused, staying with community members that have opened up their home, and then we provide support around that system. So, two schools, we have one comprehensive high school, and Gibsonak is our innovative high school, which encompasses about 2,677 students. So with that number of students in a walkable area to The Garage, we get 100 students a day. Up in Smamish, we have three schools with 5,196 students. And so what we would like to do is to bring a Smamish Garage up to our location and be able to serve those students. And right now, we're recruiting for our Teens for Teens, our steering committee, which is how we got started in Issaquah. And we're hoping to have permanent space in the Town Center, which is really an amazing place for us to gather and provide resources for our community, for our teens in particular. And then hopefully, we'll have some temporary space before that. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
Hello, good evening. My name is Carrie Bosworth, Smamish resident. I'm here tonight to lend support to the Teen Garage desire to expand to Smamish. I met them and other nonprofits and other small businesses at our farmer's market over the last couple of years. The farmer's market is a fantastic way for nonprofits and those businesses serving or residing in Smamish to meet with residents, but it's not permanent. A few, including The Garage, have expressed their desire, interest of having permanent residents in the city, that is nonprofits, small business. And a lot of them have actually reached out directly to STCA to figure out how to do that. And I think it's important that you, as the city council, are aware of their desire as well, and I hope that as you think about the Town Center, you think about the nonprofit space for nonprofits and small businesses. Tonight, since you're discussing the Town Center Plan and Development Code Amendments, this seemed like a good time to bring that up and speak about civic-minded services and amenities in the Town Center. When I attended the Planning Commission meeting last month, the consultant talked about trade-offs and incentives, and having a bit more space might be able for the city who might get better financing for civic-minded projects. I had the opportunity to visit The Garage in Issaquah, learn about its history, and see the students there taking advantage of what it has to offer. It was really cool. And I was actually back there a few weeks later on a sunny afternoon, and I actually saw those students going to The Garage and the community center that was there. I recall in previous years, the Human Services Commission evaluated funding for nonprofits in Smamish, and specifically, that led to funding the senior center, or senior services at Beaver Lake Lodge. So I was wondering if the commission hasn't already, perhaps they could study how space could be accommodated in Town Center for nonprofits and small businesses. Seems like there's already precedence. The Youth Eastside Services Cross Path operates in the former Sweene House over here in Lower Commons. It looks like in 2019, they were granted a one-year lease to be renewed yearly, and then in December 2022, it looks like you guys agreed to a three-year lease for them there. And that's probably because Townsletter has been moving along a little bit slowly. So this is both hopeful, that those folks have a place in Smamish, and I think it speaks to how much the Town Center is not really moving very quickly. But I hope that they and other nonprofits are part of your plan, and that you'll consider helping provide a place for them to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Sienna?
Hello, my name is Sienna Gould, and I am a junior at Gibsonak High School. I live in Smamish, and I have come to speak to you today on behalf of the Issaquah team at Sustainability Ambassadors, which is a youth-led nonprofit organization with a vision to rapidly advance a sustainable future. And our current work and future plans include helping to create an Issaquah school district-wide policy similar to what Bellevue did a year ago. I would like to thank you all for your support and time taken to implement the Smamish Climate Action Plan, which is such an important step in creating a sustainable future. The Issaquah School District spans over a number of cities, including Issaquah, Smamish, and parts of Newcastle and Renton. With over 19,000 students, the Issaquah School District has a very large impact on not only our youth's education, but also our community. Because of this, we would like to ask for your support in our initiative to help the school board create a sustainability policy, which will reflect the goals stated in the Smamish Climate Action Plan. In conclusion, we ask that the council board construct a letter of recommendation to the Issaquah School District to collectively work towards meeting Issaquah's Climate Action Plan and Smamish's Climate Action Plan. By creating linkage between the Issaquah School District and the city through a sustainability policy, not only would campaigns be more sufficient, but they would be more effective to give a higher chance in achieving the sustainable goals set in the Climate Action Plan. Thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you. Is it Kui?
Yeah.
Great.
Good evening. I'm Kui Goulding. I live here in Smamish. I'd love to address the council regarding, obviously, Town Center, but also how we can protect our environment. So I wanted to read something quickly. So the Smamish Sustainability Commission, one of their missions is, or their mission, I should say, is "The City of Smamish is committed to protecting its natural environment and promoting sustainability through initiatives aimed at reducing the city's carbon footprint and preserving its unique natural resources." I think we would all agree, yes, this is something we all want to do. We live here for a reason. We love Smamish, we love the trees. We have in front of us a large Town Center that's going to be built, I think, in the future here. We're looking at it. You guys are working very hard on it. My ask of the city and the city council is, how can we protect our canopy in this city, in this community, our tree canopy? I think we need to look at getting a full-time arborist, it's one of my requests, as well as an urban forester. The other thing is, if we're going to have these companies come in and build these big real estate, and the realtors come in and build these buildings and these apartments and townhomes, and they're going to cut down hundreds of trees, isn't it our responsibility to say, "Plant them someplace else"? Take 100 trees that you cut down, but you're responsible for, we can call it tree banking, we can find a way to raise money, or ask them to raise money, I should say, to pay to have these trees planted in these other areas that we have in Smamish. We have green areas, we need to protect them. So that is my big request as a citizen. I know there's other people here, I'm sure, who agree with this, but we live in one of the most beautiful places. We have more wildfires than ever. We need to figure out a way to continue to keep our air clean. We need more trees to pull in all the bad pollution. We're going to have more cars on the street, so please think about this. Think about how we can protect our environment, plant trees, come up with a solution, please, I ask of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
Do I press, oh no, it's on. Hi, Lisa Steele, Smamish, Washington. I'm also going to speak about the trees again. I've been trying to educate myself on the UFMP, the Urban Forest Management Plan, and I think I understand that back in 2017, there was about 96,000 that was budgeted for an arborist, a full-time arborist on staff, rather than just getting one when they needed one. And I am a strong advocate for that to happen soon, sooner than the next Tree Canopy Plan, which I believe wonderfully is going to be studied in 2025. But I would strongly hope that an arborist could be looked at as part of an important piece of the budget. And then also, an urban forest, excuse me, I'm a little nervous tonight, an urban forester position is something new that I've been educating myself about, and those two positions would work hand-in-hand with each other, but have similar and different strategies. The arborist, obviously, working towards individual trees and maintaining the importance of our trees, but an urban forester position, working more with real tangible things like climate crisis, which is here, and wildfires, which are becoming more and more of a problem everywhere, and possibly in our community. So that sense of ecosystem connection is something that could really be looked at by an urban forester position. So as I'm trying to educate myself, and I'll be at the sustainability meeting next week, and probably speaking to them about this too, and I know the UFMP and the Tree Canopy are things that are coming up, I believe, in their March meeting, but I know that the city council has even more weight and takes a lot of suggestions. So those two positions, I think, as you try to figure out, and it's so complicated, budgets, and what money goes where, and what do you need to give up to get this, but I think especially an arborist is something that is so important as we move forward with all of the challenges in our city, with the trees in the Town Center, but the trees around the entire city. I think having someone on staff that you absolutely could go to, and they would be so much more involved with the city than just someone that you take for individual projects, could be a really valuable addition to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise?
Hello, Denise, Smamish, Washington. First of all, I want to thank Sienna and maybe the other students that are here, all for sustainability. I'm so excited to see you, and I'm really excited to hear that you're trying to get an initiative for the climate change and sustainability within Issaquah School District and Smamish and Issaquah. It sort of goes along with what we're all saying, that as we've talked about before, our city is this beautiful, green place. And I know a number of us have said that we have more tree retention than other cities, we've been ranked number one in these magazines, so why don't we want to keep the magic that we have? Why are we wanting to just be like everyone else, be like Redmond and Clearcut? So let's challenge ourselves to do something different. Let's get a full-time arborist for one of the most gorgeous cities in all of Washington. Of all the cities around here, we should have a full-time arborist. It just makes so much sense, I'm sure you'll agree. And like I said before, when I voted for all of you on these beautiful environmental platforms, stick with your environmental principles. Be really in sync with your hard-working planning staff, and thinking about the environmental impact of everything, more than doing what the developers might be pressuring you to be doing. I love Amy's plan, on a side note, to work with Republic and to get our garbage less intense in our area, and just all of that ways that you talked to us when you were running, stick with your beliefs and do what's right for our area. I'm still proposing that we don't have 0% tree ordinance in the whole Town Center. That just devastates me to think of all the trees being clear-cut. There has to be a better way. Also, with talking to our citizens and our community, 2,000, okay, we'll have to do 2,000. We do not need to do 4,000. And even if a person doesn't even care that much about the tree retention, they do care about the traffic. And wishfully thinking that apartments aren't going to have that many kids, just follow a school bus in Redmond in the morning that's picking up all those kids in the apartments, and it's not necessarily true. A lot of families have to live in apartments with kids. We also can't reassure ourselves that they're only going to have one car. That's not necessarily true, so we can't bank on 4,000 by wishfully thinking that all of this is going to happen. So let's agree to 2,000 and make it the prettiest Town Center with the most tree canopy, along with our lovely new arborist that we possibly can. So I'm challenging you to support the citizens and the residents that keep talking to you more than what the developers are pressuring you to do. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Matthew?
Hi there. My name is Matthew Fisher. I'm a junior at Isqwa High School, and I'm a part of the Smamish Isqwa Sustainability Ambassadors team. We have been a part of several initiatives at Isqwa High School and Skyline High School, including the installation of a new refillable water station and distribution of 500-plus refillable water bottles in partnership with the Cascade Water Lines. And I've seen firsthand, as a student, the impact that these initiatives can have, and that's why we are trying to take this, this level of scope in these projects to a district-wide level for the school district. And I believe that ties right in, along with Smamish Climate Action Plan, and you guys have made several advancements. I've worked with Rishi Hazra, who was a big proponent of this, of that Climate Action Plan, and he had a vision, and we want to keep carrying on this vision and take it to the school district, so we can not only work with the city, but also integrate that with education and learning opportunities for the school district to ultimately advance this plan. That is why we're asking for a letter of recommendation to the school district to work collaboratively towards this purpose. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak? We'll do the public hearing later on the transit plan, but they did not get a chance to sign up. Okay, Paul?
Hello, city council members. Paul Stickney, Smamish. Happy Super Tuesday. And the reason I mention that is, is part of the comment that I turned in in writing, I've introduced a new term, tri-ideological. And in today's comment, what I talked about is, is there are some facts and information and consequences that will inform everyone's opinion on what's the right way for the future. And I respect much of the comments that have been said this evening. As you know, I have a Bachelor of Science in Resource Conservation from the School of Forestry in University of Montana, and I love trees also. But not to correct, but just to add a couple statements which I believe are true. I don't believe any development interest in Smamish has had any influence on our land use, ever. I've been following it since incorporation. Our city comes up with the Town Center Plan, we want, they just, you know, build it. And you may not know this, but King County zoning at incorporation had a certain number of residential capacity units based on county zoning and ordinances at the time of incorporation. And by the time the first comp plan in Smamish got adopted in 2003, I've seen two studies, one in 2000 and one in 2001. Those two studies say two things that are not the same. One said King County capacity for single-family housing was around 13,000 housing units in what was the city of Smamish. And another study done a year later was just over 10,000. Well, our comp plan lowered that to about 5,400 units primarily through the net density ordinance and several other ordinances. And subsequently, things have gotten a bit lower on the single-family side through, you know, the Phase 1 and Phase 2 of development regs. And I would just have people keep in mind that the number of single-family homes built in Smamish, half by King County and half by us, consumed about 1,500 acres, and the part of what can go in Town Center is about 120 acres-ish. And all I would add is that we need to figure out what kind of housing we need for our community, for lifetime and legacy, and figure out where that goes for our benefit, not for who gets to build it.
Thank you.
That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tanessa, did we have anyone sign up online?
We have Mary Victor.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, this is Mary Victor. I've lived in Smamish for 23 years, almost 24 now. I just wanted to say I'm appreciative of all the public comment tonight. Trees are very important, and I like Mr. Stickney's comments, particularly because, I'll give you an example, in environmentally critical areas, which are erosion hazard, landslide hazard, and seismic hazard areas, those are geologically hazardous areas, they're supposed to be identified and protected. We're not supposed to be developing there, and when we are, a lot of times, people really, really struggle with the development and getting it to finish or actually complete without foreclosing, without taking multiple years, five years, or even a decade to complete successfully. So one of the things that's really important is, when we're developing in those areas, they're critical areas and they're not properly identified, a lot of those lots have 10, 20, 30, 40 trees on them. So an acre of land is about, what's 43,560 square feet? So an R4 parcel would be about 11,000 square feet, or usually they're a little bit less. And when they're on a steep slope or a sloped area, it becomes a smaller amount of land to work with. And some of those houses that are trying to build just one single-family home are taking 20, 30, 40 trees out on that single lot. And while they say, "Yeah, we'll replant them," there really isn't any way to do it with the foundation of the house, and you're not even supposed to have septic systems in geologically hazardous areas anymore. And you just, you don't have anywhere to put the stormwater and other things. So what we're doing is, we're developing in those highly constrained, multiple critical areas overlapping on each other. We're not able to put them somewhere else because we need a transfer development right program, which I see is coming up at your next meeting. So it's very important to understand that we need to stop developing where we shouldn't be. We need to develop in the centers and the other places to get the housing mix, and I'll speak, I'll just say what Paul Stickney's saying about the types of housing that we need is super important, I believe all his numbers are correct. And so we do need to have more density in Town Center. Town Center will help us get the housing that we need. It will actually reduce the climate impacts to reduce emissions, and it will save more trees, because where they develop in Town Center, they'll be leaving those places that shouldn't be developed in highly constrained, critical areas. And you'll get a lot better mix of different diverse housing that's within walking of transit, or schools, or shopping, or the other things, rather than sprawling out. So it really is important to look at what you're doing. I know the TDR is upcoming, I just wanted to speak tonight because I think understanding those things is super important, and I'm sorry that I didn't have the time to write up something, some visual images for my comments.
Great, thank you. And was that it for signups?
There's no more commenters.
Great, thank you. All right. Next up, we have our consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to approve that.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
All right, any questions on any of the items on there? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Now we have our proclamation for Women's History Month with Deputy Mayor Howe.
Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force inside and outside the home, and serving courageously in the military, and whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and whereas the city of Smamish has employed women, many in leadership roles, who are serving the community in impactful ways, it will honor Women's History Month and content with resources on its diversity, equity, and inclusion page, and whereas women have been leaders fighting for and securing equal rights and opportunity throughout our country's history as abolitionists, civil rights leaders, suffragists, and labor activists, and women continue to lead as advocates for reproductive rights and as champions of racial justice and LGBTQ+ equality to create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite significant progress, women and girls continue to face systemic barriers to full and equal participation in our economy and society, fueling the critical need to speak up and work harder for fairness in our institutions and social interaction. And whereas this year's theme celebrates, women who advocate for equality, for equity, diversity, and inclusion, women from every background have long realized and understood that... that an uneven playing field will never bring equity or equality or justice. In order to have a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination entirely from our lives and institutions. Now therefore, Kayla Clark, Mayor of the City of Samamish, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2024 to be Women's History Month in the city of Samamish.
Great, thank you. All right, we have, it's been a while, and we have our David and Audrey updates. Nice, ready to go.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council. It'll be hard to follow the presentation or the speeches by our students this evening, so I'll try hard. I am back again to talk about the major projects we have going on. We have Audrey here to my left, who's also available to answer any questions. I'll just go ahead and get started. We've got a lot ahead of us here in the next few months. It was hard to fit this all on here, and actually, the last slide, I'll show you what I was not able to fit on here. While the city council's agenda might seem light with regard to planning projects, we are heavily at work with the Planning Commission, trying to get through a pretty big workload in order to make sure to bring things to you that are mature and have been thought through so that you can then take it on and add some additional refinement to that before it's right-sized for the city and ultimately approved. The first is streamlining the permit process. This is one that came out of Senate Bill 5290, where we're required to meet certain timelines. We're working with the Planning Commission on some changes to our administrative section of our permit rules. We'll be working on that and bringing those through to a public hearing in April and then bringing that to the city council. That's the first phase. There are a few phases that follow with regard to right-sizing design requirements and trying to fix some of the other, I guess, challenges in our permit process. So we're looking forward to this project, something that we all want to do better on, and we have, we feel like there's a lot of opportunity here. The next item is transfer development rights. This is one that is really important to the community. There are basically two options for, or two, two different programs as we see it. One is the, the King County inter-local agreement transfer development rights program that we have up and running. And that's the low-hanging fruit where there's a lot of opportunity right in front of us to work with King County, to amend the ILA, to get a better, a better output, if you will. Then the other one is the internal TDR program, and that's something that's going to be a second phase of this work program. So the first part you'll see is, is some opportunity to discuss what we've learned from King County, where there are opportunities to improve the ILA, and to deliver some additional units potentially to the Town Center. That's coming on March 12th, so right around the corner. The next item is the Critical Areas Update. This one is another heavy lift that we're working through. The next meeting is on March 21st with the Planning Commission. Then we'll be visiting the city council here in this room on May 7th. We're currently in the second phase of reviewing the different critical area elements or topical areas, if you will. So we, we did the first batch a few weeks ago, and we're going to work through the second batch. Then we're going to come back to you for some guidance, and then go back to the Planning Commission again before bringing it back to you for your, your final round of review. The next item is the Comprehensive Plan Update. This is the biggest project this year, is due at the end of the year. You can see quite a few meetings coming up on this topic with the Planning Commission. We do plan to release a first-cut working draft of the Comprehensive Plan. Again, it's not a cover-to-cover, all-inclusive release. Instead, it's, it's the, the first cut at amending and updating the Comprehensive Plan. So the Planning Commission on this Thursday will receive an overview of the plan, what's changed, and we will talk about how we will systematically go through the, the plan and move through chapter by chapter with the Commission. The following day, on March 8th, we will release a draft available to the public and to the Commission, and we will start our review, and we'll be collecting comments from the Commission and public on that. So it's a pivot, and this is really when it all comes together, when we actually have a tangible document in front of us to review. Following that, we'll be moving through piece by piece, as you can see, through April and May, and then ultimately bringing it back to the city council in the first week in September, I believe. The next one is the Town Center Plan and Code Amendments. We are, are working through this with, I believe, the city council later tonight. And then we'll be going back to the Planning Commission again, where we'll, we'll start to consider some, some changes to the, the plan, and ultimately try to identify where the balance points are. You know, if we're trying to get some additional affordability, additional housing units, what are the, the trade-offs that we need to consider and make sure are thought through? We also want to fully understand what the impacts might be. So that's part of that work as well. The next item, and I'll turn it over to Audrey for this one, is the Transit Plan.
Thank you, David. Excuse me. Good evening, Council. Audrey Starcy, Public Works Director. I'm also joined by our Deputy Director of Public Works, Greg Stamatio. So we are very excited to bring you this evening the Transit Plan. So we plan on just in a few minutes presenting that plan and opening the public hearing tonight. We will return on March 19th and close the public hearing and hopefully ask Council to adopt the plan. So very excited about that. Next slide, please. And the Transportation Master Plan. We discussed this quite a bit at our retreat, but very excited to bring this to Planning Commission beginning this Thursday. So we'll provide an introduction at this Thursday's meeting, and then we'll be back in April with an update. And majority of that work will be brought to Council, and I'm sorry, to Planning Commission and Council after May. So our slides will just continue to be full the next few months. And finally, we have some stormwater code amendments. These are primarily focused on some updates to our low-impact development stormwater code. So those will be going forward to Planning Commission in May as well. Back to you, David. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. And the final slide, the meetings I couldn't fit on the other slides. On March 14th, the Sustainability Commission will be holding a workshop on the Climate Change and Resiliency Comprehensive Plan element. Wanted to make sure they get their eyes on that as we continue to develop the update to the Comprehensive Plan. On April 11th, they will again have another meeting on that where we'll talk through some of their comments and any recommendations they might have in moving forward with the comp plans. So just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that as well. That's it. If there are any questions, happy to answer them. Audrey's here as well, so.
Councilwoman Maitrein?
Yeah, how are you going to, hi, David. Councilwoman Maitrein, how are you going to, going to release the draft on the Comprehensive Plan? I believe you said the 9th or the 8th?
Yes, correct. So this Friday, in the morning, we hope, but don't quote me on that. Sometime on Friday, we will release the, the first draft of the Comprehensive Plan. It'll be issued through the city's InVision 2044 Comprehensive Plan website. We're also going to be working to make sure there's, there's some news information on that release. It'll be released to the Planning Commission using the ConVeo platform, where they'll be able to provide comments and edits where that we can collect. And then when we come back to them, we'll walk through those. The public will have full transparency and be able to see all those.
And then can you go back one slide to the other calendar for just a second? Yeah, thanks. On the Critical Areas Update, that's going to go to the Planning Committee, thank you, on March 21st. And, and are we doing any, or is the Commission going to be looking at mapping as a way to show where those critical areas are?
So mapping is a, is a big deal. It's one of the topics that we're, we're working through. We're not, we do not have any mapping budgeted as part of this effort. This is really just making sure the rules are set right, the knobs and dials and levers are set in the right position. One of the things we're identifying is that there is a need to update several of our map sets, and there will be a recommendation that comes out of this as exactly what we need to do to update those maps. We'll need to budget for that, and we'll need to then pick up that work in '25 or whenever the work plan allows for it. It is very expensive to, to update maps. So that is one thing we want to make sure everyone's aware of, is that it's valuable, it's great to have, but it also is very expensive and time-consuming.
Okay, and then the, the last question I had was for Audrey Starcy. On the stormwater code amendment, you have, thanks. The Planning Commission's looking at it May 2nd. When would that come to the council?
I don't have those dates off the top of my head. Later in the year, for definitely, these are primarily minor amendments that we're looking at that, that allow for staff to work through a lot of the processes a little bit easier. So there's not a requirement per ecology or a manual. So I don't have the dates in front of me, but I can certainly get back.
So these aren't requirements that the Department of Ecology, like new things that they've said, hey, this is what we need to change in our code?
No, not yet. We do have a new permit coming later on this year for ecology, and we, but those manual cycles typically follow a year or two after the new NPDS permit. So this is primarily driven by staff and just an opportunity to make some amendments. They're more of a minor cleanups than, than major amendments.
So give me, sorry, follow-up question here, because when you talk stormwater, these are small changes that you're making in the language, the verbiage, the, you know, the words? That's the changes you're making or bringing forward?
That's my understanding, yeah. And it's related to low-impact development.
The LID?
LID, yeah.
Yeah, for LID then. Okay, if that's the case, then I'm, move forward, please, quickly. So bring that to us. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
A quick question for David. How long is the public comment period? Is it, or do we have a standard period?
So at this point, for the Comprehensive Plan, I'm guessing.
Correct, sorry.
Yeah, there, there is no, technically no public comment period open. We'll get to that point when we approach a hearing. We, we are making it available for public comment.
For public comment? Obviously, I guess I got confused by that.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. And sorry, I apologize for any confusion on that. We are, we are giving the Planning Commission direction to complete their review and provide comment within a certain timeframe so that we can continue to workshop through it. It's available to the public for their review. We do appreciate their comment and review. That would be provided by way of public comment, either in writing or verbally as part of the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions from Council? Great, thank you.
See you again in a few minutes.
Awesome, all right. Okay, next up, we have our public hearing on the Transit Plan with Audrey and Greg.
Yes, back to us. Good evening again, Council. For the record, Audrey Starcy, Public Works Director, and sitting to my right is our Deputy Director of Public Works, Greg Stamatio. We are very excited to bring forward the Transit Plan to city council and to the community. We do have a brief presentation to provide, and I'm joined online this evening by Lindsay Channing, our transportation planner, as well as Sarah Keenan with DKS Associates, the consulting firm working on the plan. We have received a few comments and questions to date, and I just wanted to let the community know that we will be compiling all of those and adding our responses into the next agenda packet set for March 19th. So those will be available for the, the public to go ahead and take a look at. And Lindsay will be addressing a few of those later on in her presentation this evening. So I think we can, I can keep talking while everyone's promoted. We should be joined in a few minutes by, like I said, our presenters. We'll give you a moment to get settled, and whenever you are ready, go ahead and get started. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you so much. Let me just share my screen here. All right, good evening, Council. Thank you for that introduction. Audrey, I'm Lindsay Channing. I'm the transportation planner for the city of Samamish. And as Audrey has stated, I do have Sarah Keenan with DKS Consulting, who's done a fantastic job helping us with our Transit Plan over almost this past year, on the line with us to help give this presentation this evening. So tonight, we'd like to give a brief overview, again, of the purpose of the Transit Plan. We were before you in December and went through this, but we feel it's important to give a refresher for everyone, Council and the public that's joining us this evening. We'll also go through the accomplishments that we've met thus far in the process. Quick overview of the survey results and the impact of that. We'll head into our future conditions, the actual proposed projects of the Transit Plan, and then finish it out with the next steps and schedule to get our Transit Plan through the finish line. And then I'll be asking Council to open the public hearing. We are recommending that you keep the public hearing open until the 19th of March. At that time, then close it and vote on the Transit Plan. So with that, our main goal of our Transit Plan is to have it be effective and realistic. And we want to make sure that our Transit Plan continues to be current as we move forward once we have an adopted one. So through that, our Transit Plan is recommending that we review and, if necessary, update it every five years. Within that Transit Plan, we, as I mentioned, we do have a project list that should also, that'll be part of the review and updates. And our goal with that Transit Plan project list is to make sure that we're realistic, that our projects are implementable, and that they do ultimately improve transit in Samamish in a way that we can affect the improvement, as we are not the providers of the transit service. We have sound transit and King County Metro as our transit service providers for our city. The best way that we can help improve transit in the city is to do things that can help improve accessibility, safety, and the speed and reliability of that service. So today, we've accomplished quite a few things that have been incorporated into our Transit Plan. We had an existing conditions report. We did numerous public outreach activities. We did tabling at numerous city events throughout this past year of 2023. And we also had an open house in, at the end of June of 2023, where we got some great public participation and feedback. We completed a statistically valid survey. We did a future conditions gap analysis report. We created a transit level of service guidelines or loss guidelines for transit. We did an equity analysis. As I mentioned previously, we did come to Council and give an update on where we were at at the beginning of December of 2023. And then as of about three weeks ago, we had a draft Transit Plan available for public review and comment. So all of these documents that are actual documents that I've just listed are available on our project website on Samamish webpage. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to take over the presentation. So Sarah.
Okay, yes, thank you, Lindsay. As Lindsay and Audrey mentioned, I'm Sarah Keenan, a traffic engineer with DKS Associates, and I've been working on this Transit Plan. And I'll start today with a brief overview of, of the survey. So as part of this project, we conducted a statistically valid survey last summer to gather feedback related to transit. And we sampled a random sample of adult residents in Samamish, and based on our key demographics, we had a really great representative sample of survey residents, or of city residents in the survey. Our goal was to complete 400 interviews, and that would result in a statistically valid survey. And we ultimately gathered 935, so much higher than our original goal, and that resulted in a margin of error of 3.2%. And this survey really helped us identify the needs and desires of potential transit users. So this really informed our project list. Next, I'll go through some of our key deliverables in this project, and these deliverables helped us create the final Transit Plan. Each of these are provided as an appendix to the Transit Plan, and they have their own section as well. So starting with existing conditions, where we really focused on demographics, travel patterns, and existing ridership. So here you can see that 9% of existing Samamish commuters walk, bike, or take public transit to work. In the chart, we're showing stop activity and how it varied over the years. So we're looking at 2016, 2019, and 2022. And then on the map, we're showing where you can see the stops with most activity. And you can see it's really focused around the South Samamish Park and Ride, and then around Town Center and the high school. Next- Next, we also had a, an equity analysis and a transit level of service guidelines deliverable. So our equity analysis provided some recommendations just to keep transit equitable within the city of Samamish. And our transit level of service guidelines provides a way to track and measure transit-related improvements. We also had a future conditions report, which focused both on 2025 and 2044. Here, we're showing the future 2044 network. It's similar to today in that it has the same corridor, transit corridor within Samamish. It's also running the same bus lines, 269 through King County Metro and 554 through Sound Transit. 554 will remain very similar and just have those really early morning and evening trips through through Samamish. And 269 will be expanding, King County Metro will be expanding that service in 2025. Move to all day service, which will be 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM on weekdays with 15-minute headways during the peak hour. And this, and expand to weekend service as well, which doesn't currently run through Samamish. It will connect directly to the, to the light rail stations that are opening, a plan to open in 2025 in Marymore Village as well as Mercer Island. So we can move on to the project list now. So our project list includes near-term capital projects and long-term capital projects. The near-term projects include the crosswalk study, improved bus stop amenities, and intersection improvements. And the long-term projects include transit signal priority, mobility hubs, and a neighborhood circulating shuttle. And I'll go into a little bit more detail about each of these. So starting with the crosswalk study, this will fund a more in-depth review of crossings all along the transit corridor. This study will result in recommendations for crosswalks, including the type and the cost estimate. And a key part of this study will be safety evaluation, including site distance. So ultimately, this this project will result in improved access along the transit network. Next, we have bus stop amenities. So the transit plan includes a prioritized list of bus stops for each of these amenities, as well as a cost estimate. So they include bike racks, pedestrian lightings, short landing areas or sidewalk improvements, and then things like trash cans and benches, real-time arrival display boards, and shelter footings or shelters. Next, we had a few key intersection projects, and these are meant to improve transit operations along the corridor, so improve the speed and reliability of the bus. So we'll start looking specifically at the southeast 30th and Issaquapine Lake Road. This is right by the South Samamish Park and Ride. And this project, we would add a southbound right turn overlap, which means that the southbound right turn movement can go at the same time as the eastbound left turn. And this would help provide quicker access to the park and ride for the bus, as well as other vehicles that are accessing the park and ride from the north. Next is southeast 24th and 228th, and this was a location where we saw as a potential option for a Q jump. So what that means is the bus could bypass the through traffic by using the right turn lane. And this could be accompanied by also moving the bus stop to the south side of the signal. And next, we had northeast 37th Way and Sahili Way, and we proposed a continuous green T here. So what that means is we'd modify this intersection by adding a hard barrier for the northbound through lane. And this would allow the eastbound left turn to go at the same time as the northbound through. And they could merge into one lane further north of this bus stop. This would provide a benefit not only for the, not only for the bus, but also for general purpose traffic traveling through this intersection. And it could improve travel time for the bus as well. And really, the northbound would only be required to stop if there's a pedestrian call at this intersection, and otherwise it would be green all the time. Next, we had a few specific locations where we can optimize the bus stop location around the intersection. So we're not actually moving the bus stop location, but we're changing which side of the intersection it's on. So there's a few reasons to do this. It could improve bus stop operations. It may allow for future crossing improvement a little bit easier, or it might provide better access for residents living near the bus stop. So here's a couple of locations on East Main Street, moving the northbound bus stop to the far side could help transit operations. On North 36th Street, moving the north, the the southbound to the near side could provide better access for residents living near this bus stop. And I had two more locations here as well, where we'd recommend potentially moving the bus stop to the far side. Here, it would be paired with a sidewalk improvement and create better access for the residents in this neighborhood on northeast 14th. And it's really the same thing here on northeast 22nd. It paired with a sidewalk improvement could provide better access for the residents in this neighborhood as well. Next is transit signal priority, also known as T S P. T S P allows the bus to talk directly to the transit, to the traffic signal. And there's a device basically on the metro bus that sends data to the signals, and it allows the signal to give priority to the bus as it's approaching the intersection. So this can really help with the travel time for the bus as well. Next here, we have mobility hubs. So in the transit plan, we recommend one or two larger mobility hubs and several smaller mobility hub. So the larger mobility hubs could be created either by enhancing the existing park and ride, South Samamish Park and Ride, or by adding a new location near the town center north of southeast, Southeast 8th Street. And we also suggest three to six smaller mobility hubs, and these smaller mobility hubs wouldn't have parking, but they could have, they would be enhanced bus stops. And they could have any of the amenities on this, listed on this slide as well. We also separated the smaller bus stops into priority and supplemental, and this has just helped the city kind of prioritize where these locations would be, and it's really just based, based on location and potential ridership. And lastly, we have this neighborhood circulating shuttle. This is a city-funded shuttle that provides, that helps people who are living in the residential access get access to the transit line and town center. So on this slide, we're showing one potential option for the circulating shuttle. Where it goes kind of through all the neighborhoods, more residential areas, and connects right back to the transit route. For here, we'd recommend four to five shuttles during peak hours and two to three shuttles off-peak. Yeah, thank you so much. That's all I have. I'm going to hand it back to Lindsay.
Great, thank you, Sarah. So as a refresher for our schedule, we began this work back in spring of 2023. We began working with a technical advisory committee. We held our public workshop where we got some great volunteers for our citizen advisory committee. We had two citizen advisory committee meetings. Both the T A C and the C A C were involved throughout the draft process. They were also received copies of the draft. We finalized our project list in the fall and then our final report. So here we are tonight, getting our public hearing. And again, we're asking that council conduct the public hearing and continue it to the 19th in two weeks for council consideration and adoption. And before we get to the public hearing, I just wanted to briefly address that we did receive some great questions regarding the transit plan. A few of those have been addressed direct through our presentation, such as what all-day service means on bus route 269, which Sarah did a great job of explaining how our service will be expanded with Metro's 269 route starting in 2025. We had some questions around annual maintenance for display boards. Our cost estimates in the transit plan itself do not take into account annual maintenance, but that's something that would need to be discussed with Metro prior to any display boards being installed and whose responsibility is what in regards to those display boards. And then the majority of the questions were around the circulating shuttle. And if the route was more set in stone, if you will, of course, it's not. There's a lot of work that will need to be done if the city chooses to move forward with a circulating shuttle and fund that project in the future as far as just studies and public process and input, and talking with vendors and really trying to dial in what the most appropriate route is. So that was just to give a good idea of what a route could look like for the city. So with that, I would recommend that council open the public hearing. If you have any questions, please let us know. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. All right, council. So we are opening the public hearing for the transit plan. We'll start with public comment first and then get to everyone's questions, if that works for everyone. Cool. All right. So signed up in the room, I only have Paul, if you'd like to go get started.
Weird. Oh, there we go. From high above. City Council, Paul Stickney, Samamish. I'd like to compliment Sarah Keenan, the team, the staff, and council member Sid, who was on the Climate Action or on the Transit Action Committee, who was a rock star on that committee, who really understands that stuff. I got a chance to read the entire draft plan, and overall, it's very, very good. And one comment that I appreciated was that it was open to the fact that the future of land use is yet to be clearly set in stone. And council member Trin has been a advocate of knowing as a community where we're going to go on land use. I've been the same. We maybe don't have the same idea, but we do agree that that is a important future. So I want to compliment the team for saying that that will be something as the plan gets updated every five years to consider what those land use aims in the future do to the transit plan. At the Town Center Open House, Community Development Director Pyle said on answering one question, he said, I don't want to, and I'm not going to say exactly, but he said, I don't want to commit heresy by talking about trees. We may have an issue with some trees, you know, it's getting more dry. We may not have as many. Well, I don't want to commit heresy either, but there's a couple trail blazing issues that are in play. On the Parks Commission meeting tomorrow, they have a copy of the 2017 Land Acquisition Strategy, close to 35 to 40 pages. That was a total trail blazing event by the City of Samamish then. And Samamish has gone trail blazing and creating new things over time. There are two brief trail blazing things I'd like to talk about, and I don't want to upset anyone. I'm just sharing my I statements. I don't believe transit comes to Samamish first. I believe we set our land use that we want and set transit to that land use. I get that we get Town Center the way it gets to, and there's a lot of ideas on how that should be, but once it comes to that idea, what do the other subareas do, and what goes in single-family housing neighborhoods, which in my opinion is as little as possible? So set our transit to meet our own internal land use. And the second trail blazing thing is when you're figuring out what's the right amounts of different and diverse housing in Samamish, there's many quantified factors that have various assumptions, and different people will have different opinions on those assumptions. So we need to get clear on the factors, have a community discussion on assumptions, and set our numbers.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wanted to do public comment on this hearing for the transit plan? Denise?
Just really quick, two things I I know you can't really necessarily answer.
Can you identify yourself?
Yes, Denise Steele-Dornell, Samamish, Washington.
Thank you.
When you're showing the pictures of the bus and all the aerials of the trees, I wasn't clear if that meant that that would all be clear cut, those different tree areas? Just wondering about that. And then secondly, we really were hoping that we could extend the transit plan with a comment period, which I believe ends like on March 19th, so not making a decision tonight. I know you did the great survey, but is that an option to keep this open, to give more citizens time, since we don't have very many people here and nobody's on Zoom, unfortunately? Okay, thank you.
All right. Was there anyone else for the transit plan? Did anyone get signed up? Awesome. Is it Mary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. This is Mary Wickdern, Samamish for 23, 24 years. I did have a chance to look over the transit plan and as part of the presentation.
Sorry, Mary, one moment. We're having a sound thing here. It might be, it might be yours, or it might be here. It's like a very high pitched.
I have nothing on in my background and I completely silent.
Just one moment. If you start talking again, does it do it again?
Yes, this is Mary Wickdern.
Okay, perfect. You're good now. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for doing that. So I did have a chance to look over the transit plan, didn't read it in depth, but I think it looks really great, and I really appreciate all the effort and all the public comment and the work that's gone into it. I wanted to just put some wider things. I'm glad the land acquisition plan was mentioned for the Parks Commission, which is happening this week. I had spoken before at your retreat about connectivity in general, and also at the most recent city council coffee this last Saturday. We need to think about connectivity everywhere because a lot of people can reach 228th because they're directly on it, but there's a lot of people that can't, and maybe there's a shorter way to walk or get to it than to go through the regular streets through the neighborhoods, because we're very neighborhood centric in the city, flooded in in cul-de-sacs. So I think it's super important for connectivity that that be a topic for every single project that we do anywhere. And also, there's some east-west connections, which I think Lewis Thompson Road is one of them, and northeast Inglewood Hill Road is one of the first ones that was completed. I know, for example, in Lewis Thompson, if you're somebody and you wish to catch a bus, there's no place they can pull over and stop. So there's one suggested area in the plan that could be so like man bands or shuttles or something could pull over to pick up people. I think we need to look at that. And then also, the East Lake Samamish Trail was finally opened this year. It's about, I think, a $48 million project, about 37 million of it's done in the city. There will be people coming from there. So I think we need to look at how can we get those connections on the Parkway, which doesn't have any bus service, so that people could get up to 228th, where there is going to be a very fine core and spinal thing that serves the area. So the other thing I just wanted to say is on the connectivity, connectivity really needs to be added as every single project, not as a separate thing or an additional thing, just every time that we do a development, a single house, something for the schools. For example, Inglewood Junior High, which is now Inglewood Middle School, is one of the largest, I believe, in the area and the state. It's very, very large, as is East Lake High School. We need multiple ways that people can walk to that school, so you can get in and out, whether you're going to a bus, a shuttle, like maybe you're an eighth grade student that wants to take orchestra in the morning, so you need to get to East Lake High School. And I know sometimes the school districts offer those, but there's just ways that you need to get in between, between the schools for people to connect, for the kids to do activities, and for everybody to be safe. So thank you for listening to my comment and cleaning. So thank you for listening to my comment and cleaning up my volume so that you could hear. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Is that all for online? All right, thank you. Okay, council, I will open it up for your questions and comments. And I know, I don't know, Councilmember Gupta, if you got all yours answered? I know you sent in, okay. Yeah, Councilmember Gupta.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you to staff. I did send in questions, got answers for a lot of what I'd asked, so I really appreciate the time. Really excited about the transit plan. I was able to work on the community committee before I was elected, so it's very exciting to be able to be on council and hopefully adopt it going forward. I did have a couple of questions, and maybe this is for Sarah, since DKS did the project proposals, but for the southeast twenty-fourth Street and two twenty-eighth Avenue bus Q-jump that was proposed, I was just, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I was just interested to see that that was, as part of that, we would be moving a far side bus stop to a near side of the intersection. And it was, the transit plan does say that more analysis is needed, but I was just curious if that is projected to provide a significant increase over keeping the far side stop as we are moving other stops to be far side stops and focusing on the TSP instead? I don't know if you have an answer for that?
Right, yeah, thank you for the question. We have not completed a full traffic analysis of that intersection, but typically we do pair a bus Q-jump with a near side stop, and typically that does provide better transit access when it's, or better transit operations. When it's just transit signal priority and no, no Q-jump, then normally we'd have a far side stop for better transit, transit operations. So again, that's just general, and we would have to look at a specific traffic analysis for this intersection.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I am just so excited about the transit plan. This has been a very long time, for me at least, incoming. And I know you guys only went back to two thousand and sixteen, but for those of us who've been here a long time, the, the amount of transit and the amount of transit riders we've had has been going down, and I don't think there's any coincidence, right? When the frequency of transit goes down, the number of people riding transit tends to go down. So I'm excited to see us work on this so that we can turn that around in the other way. When you look at our city, right, we have ten percent of our residents are tweens. So for those who don't know that, right, those are our young people who are sort of teens or are teens but can't yet drive. So transit is really important for, for that population in particular, and their parents, just to be clear. So I'm excited about this. One big question that I had that struck me when I was reviewing this again was the transit level of service is only based on comparing how fast you can get from point A to point B on transit versus a car. Is that, my first question is, is that sort of an industry standard, or are there other factors that one can put into transit LOS?
Yeah, I'm happy to take that question. I'd say it's not industry standard. Transit level of service is kind of fairly new within transportation engineering and planning. So there isn't exactly a standard yet for transit level of service. This is one option that similar communities around Samamish have been doing. Bellevue uses, for example, as their transit level of service. We can also look at what's provided for amenities, but we wanted to keep it focused on something that Samamish has a little bit more control over, so that would be the kind of travel speeds and bus operations.
Okay. And then what struck me that I didn't know where it fit, right? So that's kind of why I asked about the level of service, where the other things that I think are really important about transit, and that is the environmental impacts and equity and really cost, right? So when we look at the cost of transportation in a single, you know, in a car versus the cost of transportation on transit to the individual, like that's a big thing, and that might be part of equity, right? But how do we factor those things into, if not the level of service, into the, the plan and how we make decisions going forward?
I can speak to that a little bit. I think part of that, and first of all, I want to start by saying that the plan is meant to be reviewed and updated often, right? So hopefully this does not just sit on a shelf. It will be, the policies will be folded into our transportation element. You'll see that later on this week. And all these projects will likely be added to our TMP, right, and possible our six-year CIP. So just wanted to start with that piece of it. In terms of level of service, as we don't operate transit ourselves, just wanted to be cautious with the wording there. But we do have guidelines there to help us guide the priority for some of the projects that we can take a look at, that we would have control over if the city was interested, for example, in improving our bus stops. So that's kind of where we can look at there. Hopefully, did I answer your question? I can continue talking?
I think the, no, it's great. I think what I'm wondering is, and maybe it's when we talk about the tip and we talk about the TMP, but, so we talked, I don't know, I think it's been about two years ago, about what if we could purchase more transit, right? Because even when we look out at the future service, right, we're still not going to get anytime soon a lot of service. But when I think about how do we move people faster, cheaper, stronger, you know, feel like a Six Million Dollar Man commercial or whatever, but when I think about doing that, you know, a shuttle between, you know, say, the Town Center or Transit Center or mobility hubs or whatever, and the light rail stop, right? Like, that could be a way to really move people faster and more efficiently. We're not going to get that from King County Metro or Sound Transit, but that might be something we could invest in. And it might be, I mean, we don't know, we haven't done the analysis, but it might be a whole lot cheaper than building extra lanes, right? So that's where I feel like, how do, how does that factor in, and where does, where does that get considered?
I think part of that is the sixth category, right, of that shuttle, but that was really addressing kind of that last mile, or in Samamish's case, a little bit beyond the last mile. But that's just, and part of that is density, right? So that, when we have wonderful opportunities like Town Center, like you're going to hear about next, with that density comes sometimes transit, right? And so it's that advocating for that with our partners as well, but you have to have the density to support transit. And we have had great conversations with Metro, there's just not an opportunity to purchase service. They don't have the fleet, they don't have the drivers available, it's very expensive, so that's probably not an option. That's why it wasn't in the transit plan as a, as a project.
All right, great. And then you talk about a mobility hub as opposed to a transit center on two twenty-eighth. Can you explain the difference between the two?
Sure, and I'll start, and then I'm going to let the experts finish.
Awesome, thank you.
So the mobility hub is a, something that can be flexible depending on the need in terms of the amenities it provides, so that's why there's a range. It, it really is future focused and, and hopefully catering to things like EV bikes and bike lockers and storage, and not so much as a traditional park and ride, where it would be simply a, you know, garage or a parking structure that would just be one level.
And would it be, would, would a definition of a mobility hub be something where it could be big enough for, like, when I think about the future of transit, we're going to have, hopefully, very soon, electric buses? And so we might need to be able to have a facility where a bus could pull off and get swapped out so it can charge, or if they do battery swapping, there would have to be a facility big enough so buses can pull in and swap the batteries. However that plays out technologically, would a mobility hub potentially be able to offer that kind of space?
That's not something that we've planned.
Having worked with, with Metro in the past on their electrical charging, they have pantograph overhead charging typically, and we could incorporate that into facilities if it's something that they show that they need as they electrify their fleet. Metro is at the forefront of electrifying their fleet and is, has very aggressive in doing so. So we would coordinate any opportunity to help provide that level of service so that they could provide the service to our, to our constituents.
But a mobility hub wouldn't necessarily be a place like where buses might?
It would probably be at the park and ride where they would, it would be areas where they would lay over.
Okay, so we would, we're not thinking about adding any kind of park and ride other than what we have at the south end? We're not thinking about anything closer to, or in the direction of the light rail?
We're, we're focusing primarily on mobility hubs and encouraging opportunities for that last mile access to get to transit, right, through bikes, through walking. There could be parking, I think there's different sizes, and Sarah, Lindsay, please jump in, but there are a handful of different sizes and priorities, priority spots along, along the transit corridor, too.
Yeah, I'm happy to add with that. I think Audrey did a great job with the definition. In terms of parking, as I was mentioning, you know, the smaller mobility hubs or the larger mobility hubs, a larger mobility hub could have parking, and there is potential for, you know, a new larger mobility hub somewhere near Town Center, north of southeast H Street. Of course, there's a lot more planning that needs to go into that.
Okay, so they, they might at least have parking, and there might be something, whatever we need to support Metro and eventually Sound Transit on E-buses. Okay. And then my only other question is, in the near term, since the circulator routes are going to be a longer term thing, I didn't see any mention of expanding the Metro Flex. Like, we're trying to work to expand that. The Metro Flex program is a great program, but the, the limited geographical footprint really limits the accessibility of that to a lot of people and the functionality of it quite a bit. So is that something we've talked about or considered?
Yes, we are always advocating for that with Metro. We had a great conversation actually last week with expanding some of their programs. And we, of course, would love to have the, the service area expanded, but with that, we would, to make it efficient, we would need more vehicles for that as well. So I think it's a continuous conversation. I know Lindsay's had a lot of conversations with that. Right now, they're not able to expand the service area, but the service area they do have, I, my understanding is the numbers have done pretty well with that expansion into Issaquah. So it's something that we're always, always talking about and advocating for, but it just hasn't happened north.
Great. And then my, my last comment is just, as we look at the shuttle routes, I would highly encourage us to work with the school districts, because I think there's a real opportunity for partnerships with the school districts to create circulator routes that could work in conjunction with their bus routes and maybe even a cost sharing program there. Again, to get more transit, more options, more ways for people to get around without having to drive in their cars. So I would love to see that as part of our goals. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thanks for a really comprehensive plan. I just had a couple of questions, and just following up on what Councilmember Stewart was saying, I didn't see anything mentioned in this plan about student ridership, so I didn't know whether or not, you know, whether or not there was plans to, you know, ask Metro to tweak their schedule to increase ridership or, or anything along those lines.
I don't believe so, but Sarah, do you have any, or Lindsay, are you able to expand?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, it's, that wasn't part of this plan, but we can see based on the, the map I showed earlier that a lot of the transit ridership was around the high school, so we can expect that a decent amount of the transit users are students. Yeah, Lindsay, anything to add?
I would just add that in conversations at more regional type meetings that I've attended, and that the question of, you know, tweaking the routes and things like that have come up, and Metro runs on such a tight schedule that they've mapped out their timing for their overall system, and so if they were to tweak their schedule through the city of Samamish, it would affect a much greater area than just the city for their bus scheduling. So at this time, I'm not aware of that being an option, but we're always happy to continue to have those conversations with Metro and advocate for our city.
Okay, that sounds good. We've talked in the past about bus turnouts. I don't know if that was applicable in, in any, any place on two twenty-eighth. Is it just cost prohibitive, or is it something that's not worth exploring?
I can start, but my understanding is that many transit agencies are not necessarily excited about the turnouts, but Sarah and Lindsay, please expand.
Okay. I was interested, was there any consideration, this is maybe a question from Metro, is, you know, a lot of buses have local and express, you know? And I was thinking along two twenty-eighth, which is very dense in terms of stops, whether or not that would improve the efficiency to have like an alternate, like the same bus, like the two sixty-nine, for, for instance, when it's on its peak, that the, every other bus is an express, and whether or not that would increase ridership? I don't know, just an idea.
We could have that discussion with them. I would, I would characterize the level of service that Metro is changing to is very, very good. For the current level of ridership that Samamish has historically shown is low, so for them to go to fifteen-minute headways and invest that level of service into Samamish is great for the, for the community and also for the expansion of the night and, night and weekend work services. So to get better service, better than a fifteen-minute headway would, would require improved level of ridership, which we want, we're supporting, our plan supports, and our projects are supporting by, by creating better opportunities for people to get to those, those stops. So a fifteen-minute headway is, is really, really good service, and I think we'll see the, our transit numbers really, really improve over the next three to four years, especially as people are getting used to taking those fifteen-minute buses down to Light Rail on the north end or the south end.
Yeah, I was actually pretty excited to see that increase in frequency, like every fifteen minutes versus every half hour. I think that's, you know, going to be a game changer, and to also have a fixed route for weekend. You're, you're right, yeah, I think that will be like a huge benefit. The only other, I had some comments on the data. There was one chart where you're showing the poverty status, and maybe it was me, but when I first took that map, I was, I thought, I found it really odd, just because it shows like the area all along the lakefront as having a high level of poverty. And I understand that it could be people that are on fixed incomes, but I don't know if it's helpful to have that map. I mean, like I said, the first thing I looked at it was, there's something odd about this map. And then the other one was on the zero vehicle households, which is on page one thirteen. And if you look at the orange areas, it's showing the, the percentages of households with zero vehicles. And so the dark orange is showing like, you know, three point five to ten percent. So I'm looking at this, it looks like it's up to ten percent of households don't have vehicles. But in the previous page, you're showing that one point two percent of households in Samamish don't have vehicles. So actually, it's three point five to ten percent of the one percent. So all of that data is of the one percent versus the overall households. And so there's a couple of charts, I'm sorry, I don't know the other ones, where the, it's confusing whether or not you're talking about the entire city or like of a percentage of a, of a number. So maybe just look at that. Thank you, and those were my, my comments, but, you know, I, I thought the plan was really great, and thank you.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
Thank you, and great plan. Really, really excited about it, and love the fact it's so flexible. I love the fact that it clearly anticipates, if you've got this much money and you've got this much time, you could do this, you've got this kind of ridership, you can do that. And so it allows us, I think, I think it's a planning instrument, I think it's awesome. So yay, team. The, my question is around charging for parking. So we don't charge for parking. Right now, Mercer Island doesn't charge for parking, but in the past, when the ridership was high, different park and rides were exploring charging. Now, when you do that, you, it puts pressure on the system, and actually, it can encourage people to get on the bus, because they don't want to pay for parking further away, for example. So I'm wondering if there's potentially economic pressures to help modify the behavior of our potential riders that happens due to market forces, such as charging for parking or getting a credit of some kind because you are taking the bus versus taking your car? Because if you look at behavioral attitudes, you know, we have an uphill battle, clearly, to, to swing over attitudes, but hadn't. to, to swing over attitudes. But intuitively, it'd be interesting to see where, where does that fall against demographic lines? Do we find there's a split on gender, on age, on income, you know, just, and do we see any trend that would give us hope that the younger riders that now have the free Orca card, thank you, that is an amazing thing, and I see them all lined up to take the bus home or to an after-school activity, does that create a new behavior, a new pattern that we can begin to leverage and take advantage of so that we begin to have that forward momentum to get people on a bus? I took the bus to work every morning downtown because I didn't want to pay for parking downtown. There was a heavy financial penalty for not, for not, you know, taking the bus. So I'm wondering if there's, what may be coming down the track. And I know you can't answer that right now, but those are the types of thing I'm looking at. And as we look at events like Holy that's coming up in March, which is going to drive thousands of people to Murray Moore. And so that's, we're gonna have more opportunities like this to actually encourage people to get on a bus and to try it for the first time. Now, this is gonna be a partnership with Metro that we don't really have today. We have a good relationship, but I'm looking for an even deeper level of partnership, I guess. And as, as council members here have questions, please funnel them to Councilmember Gupta and I sell, for example, for the Eastside Transportation Partnership and Councilmember Trine as well. Because if you've got things that you think are gonna help Metro, that's, that's a direct line to Metro, right? And if we can get more east side cities to kind of pile onto this, it's gonna help us. So I would, you know, appreciate that support, I think, on that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mayor. So congratulations on this plan, getting it this far. This is great. Well done, everyone. I concur with a lot of the comments to be made so far, so I'm not gonna rehash anything that's been already said. I was really excited to see all the short-term projects that are kind of lined up as opposed to being a plan that it was stretching out for, you know, decades to come and maybe we'll never ever get there. We have got some short-term goals and I really liked that, particularly the crosswalk study and making it safer to get to bus stops. As a family myself who uses public transportation, in fact, last week I took the Metro Flex to a city council meeting. So we use public transportation in my house a lot. And I did not see this in the plan and maybe it's not part of the plan, but one of the things that I think of, when my son takes the 269, I'm so excited about that route opening up, the way it's going to in 2025, is to get from our house on Southeast 24th up to 228 early in the morning, like at 6:30. The street lighting along that road is not very amenable. So I just wonder if when we're thinking about crosswalks, sidewalks even, as we go down the road and maybe as we add to this plan going down the road, we think about the street lighting and how walkable is it, even if we have a sidewalk there? How walkable is it? How dark is it? Say it's 6:00 in the morning to walk from my house will be half a mile up to 228. And is it safe? Would a single person do that, especially a single female? Would a young person walk all that way up there? So I, I think about street lighting as well in helping people get to the nearest bus stop and getting, you know, overcoming that last mile kind of trick. And yeah, that's everything I have. I just wanted to talk about street lighting. So thank you.
Councilmember Trine?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to stay high level if I can, but first, integrating our, our transit plan with the regional transit system, I believe developing that efficient connections to the upcoming light rail system in Redmond and providing residents of Semamish with access to key employment centers is critical. So if we're not doing, if, if that's not addressed and being, actually have clear projects that make that goal happen, then I'm not in support of the transit plan. But if it has that, then I could support that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip for just a second, my second point, because Councilman Gupta and I agree that, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but the, the ability to close that half a mile to a mile gap is, I think, is gonna be with electric and bikes. And we're already starting to see that, bikes or scooters. And so if we can invest, if, if the plan needs to have the ability to invest in safe and accessible pedestrian infrastructure that include, not only includes a walking part of it, but also the ability to ride an electric bike or a electric scooter to, to that bus that then gets me access, we would see an increase in ridership. Because my other point is, the, the, and I don't see it mentioned in this plan, but we have a topography that we have to consider. And so if we're not addressing the topography challenges in this plan, then I wouldn't support it at all. We have hills, valleys, steep, slow, steep roads. And our connectivity right now is, is not, is not efficient. It's not able to handle anyone. If, if, if the plan is to have this connection across the top of the hill, then no one on either side of the hill is gonna come up to the top of the hill to get access to it. Cause I'm not, people just aren't gonna do that. It's too much time. And time is what people are looking for is to save time. That's why, and then to save money. So we, if we're not gonna, we need to consider or address the topography challenges that exist here in Semamish. And then I don't see anything here that's exploring innovative ideas in which to solve that problem. So maybe, I don't have an answer for that one, but that would be a long-term solution. The other thing, and I only saw it on page 59 of your plan, and one of our residents spoke of this already about our future zoning that's gonna be taking place for housing, which I think we need to be doing ahead of this. But that being said, the, the transit-oriented development, according to King County, which we need to follow the law and follow their design, is that it's to encourage transit-oriented development around existing and future transit stations to create vibrant mixed-use neighborhoods with convenient access to transit, housing, employment, and amenities. That's what it says. So we need to say that, too, in our plan. And that's Redmond right now till 2050, or 2025, excuse me. And then it's gonna be Issaquah, 2044 now? Okay. So I mean, I think we need to work on implementing zoning policies that would, would incentivize and promote higher density development near, closer to where those transit hubs are. Cause, cause it's not at the top of the hill. It's in Redmond. It's in Issaquah. Okay. So, so those are just kind of my high-level thoughts. Obviously, the, Sarah, there you are on the screen. Hey, Sarah, you know, continue to encourage and reach out to our community. Our community is smart. They have good ideas. So continue to reach out to them. I know our staff continue to do a great job of that. So continue to reach out to the community. And I agreed with the speaker that said, you know, this is a pretty long document. This is maybe the first time a lot of them are even seeing it or hearing about it. And, and for us to keep this open for a little bit longer than just that March 19th date wouldn't be a bad idea. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I guess one of my first questions is, who will get to see, I know it'll like inform the comprehensive plan, but who, does this go anywhere besides our website?
Of course, it'll be on our website. You know, the policies will be folded into our transportation element and then the, we will be implementing our transportation element through our TMP. A lot of the projects recommended, those near-term and long-term projects will be in our TMP and then that will flow down to our six-year transportation improvement plan. So all of the, the great work here will, will go into our TMP and tip.
That sounds good, yeah. Cause I know it represents a lot of entities. I just didn't know if they know that, like where it actually goes after that. I think it's great. I'm really excited for it. I know on the frequently, on the actual page has the learn more. There's only a King County Metro link. I encourage a Sound Transit link as well. But yeah, I think this is really good. I, I do like all the comments that were made and the ones that Councilmember Gupta sent in as well. I know, yeah, two weeks is a short-ish turnaround time, but I don't know how many more comments you would get. So I don't know, Council, what you all think about that two-week timeline? Cause I, I'm, yeah. I mean, I think two weeks, they can either come the next two meetings and they can also, you know, email's open for two weeks as well, so.
Yes, and we would welcome any comments. Lindsay's contact information is on the website. So if you go to Transit Plan, City of Semamish, her information's there. Of course, you can also submit a comment through the city clerk's office. And then we would love for anyone in the community to give us feedback at the public hearing as we close the public hearing on the 19th as well.
Great. Does anyone else have anything? Awesome. And thank you, Lindsay and Sarah, for joining us as well.
Thank you so much, Council. We're excited.
Yeah, thank you. See you, Audrey. See you, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are transitioning to our unfinished business. Whoa, Kelly, where'd you come from? All right. Yes. We have David and Kelly for our Town Center Plan and Development Oh, there it is. Okay, perfect. Lagging behind. Okay, good evening, City Council. My name is Kelly Hildy and I am the Deputy Director of Community Development. Tonight, I am joined by David Pyle, our Director of Community Development, Steve Cecil, and Jeff Arango. Do we have everyone promoted? Okay. Who is, who are with our consultant team framework. Steve will be leading the presentation and providing an overview of the project work plan, the status of completed and planned housing in the town center, affordability goals and tools, and observations on commercial development, parks and open space, transportation, and infrastructure. So with that, and I'm gonna hand you.
There we go. So many, so many buttons to push, things to do here. So the, the topics we're gonna cover over the next 15 minutes or so are those that Kelly has articulated. And the town center planning is proceeding through a work plan that we had presented to you as part of a scope of work a while back. We're not gonna go back over that in any detail. But as we are working on existing conditions and understanding various topics, we're also beginning to look ahead. There's some important directions and trade-offs, as we're gonna point out, that we'll be asking you to provide input on and ultimately some decisions about. So the, the planning area itself has been well-established for, oh, it's going on near 20 years now. The, the town center area is understood through zoning mechanisms and physically well-defined at this point. And one of the things to take into consideration is the fact that we are planning with both the existing projects that have been completed, but a whole series of planned projects. And the footprints of those planned projects that are in various stages of reviews, approvals, or proceeding towards construction are shown on the map in the sort of cream-colored. So as we look forward to the next period of time, we are thinking about existing conditions. These will be very much like the existing conditions in just a few short years. So the town center amendment is the centerpiece of this planning effort. And the key topics, as has been described in a number of venues so far, focus on affordable housing and diverse housing without increasing the as-of-right densities, which are cooked into the zoning mechanisms that you've got today. And to do this, we are going to be looking at recalibrating the affordability incentives that are built into the zoning. And we'll describe that in a little more detail in just a few minutes. We need to adjust the transportation infrastructure elements and establish a basis for new development standards. We should emphasize that new street standards are needed and we're going to set the, the foundations for that. That will be a subsequent piece of work that will need to get accomplished. It's a four-stage process. We are nearing the end of the first stage. We are, we are preparing what we call an audit of the zoning and, and an evaluation of existing conditions and making sure that we understand and head towards the priorities that the community and community leaders are establishing. There's quite a bit of technical information that's being produced right now. But looking ahead, as we move through a process of looking at the options that you have, the choices, creating draft plans and then eventually final amendments over the course of a year, there will be a sequence of meetings and we will be back in front of you. And the order of events here is a rhythm where the Planning Commission is presented with progress reports and briefings, eventually coming to recommendations to bring to you all prior to final public hearings and city council decisions about the amendments that we'll be preparing. The process is engage lots of people and we should emphasize that it's everybody and anybody who's interested, but we are making sure that we are touching base with the stakeholders who are owners and developers within the area and broadly reaching out to city agencies to make sure the input and coordination is accomplished along the way. The website and document links are beginning to be populated, up and running. And we just held last week a tremendously well-attended town center open house. And some of you were at that, that meeting and it was really interesting. The exchange of information was extremely valuable to everyone. So that part of the process has been kicked off. So moving into the situation, situating the town center and what its current and future conditions are going to be, this is a slide that just reminds us of what has been accomplished and what is underway. There's a list on the left-hand side there of some of the prominent projects which have been worked on extensively over years to bring them forward and some which are still fluid. I think that's a good way of putting it. For example, the high school. The way that the high school may evolve is, is an open question in many ways, but we have a great, great sense of where it might be and maybe and how it would be accessed and other kinds of considerations, which we'll be taking into account. So let's take a quick look at the housing circumstance, because that's the focus and priority for this planning effort. In current zoning, there have been 2,000 housing units allotted, targeted for the area as a whole. And the zoning is set up with that threshold in mind. Now, after the current planning process, projects are accomplished, there will be something like 712 units completed. So that 2,000 unit threshold is still a ways away, but there are more projects and more phases in the offing. There are about 1,200, almost 1,300 units remaining to get to that total. But going back to the EIS and the initial planning that was done for this area of Semamish, an eventual horizon of about 4,000 housing units was imagined. And there's quite a bit of land out here. So our job is to take a look at that horizon through of land out here. So our job is to take a look at that horizon through the lens of how do we leverage these, this area to provide as much affordable housing as can be reasonably accomplished? So if you understand that that's the sort of horizon in the, the growth component in terms of types of housing will be leveraged by additional affordable housing. You may be aware that the EGAS Senior Living Facility is being implemented, and that is a really interesting type of development. They're not housing units in a typical way. They're called sleeping units in your zoning. And there are going to be 94 sleeping units to complement the 700-plus housing units that are taking shape up on the hill here. Now, the way the zoning was structured, to incentivize the production of affordable housing, developers could exceed the base densities by providing affordable housing with a pool of affordable housing units being able to be tapped and used to get to those higher densities. And that pool is almost empty. It will be empty soon. And so that whole program, that whole system of using incentives to affordable housing, there's some really interesting aspects to that. It worked. It worked well, right? There's a lot of housing units coming online that are affordable. But in order to move ahead, we have to reexamine that entire structure and see how it can be revised, refined, and perhaps increased as a leveraging opportunity. This is in combination with an understanding that there is some baseline affordable housing units that are required as part of the housing process as well, a 10% baseline. So when we talk about the incentives, we are also talking about what the requirement level should be as far as affordable housing is concerned. So in a, in the context of the comprehensive planning underway, and the regional planning underway, there is a, an allocation of growth that has been conceived for Sumamish over the next 20 years of about 2,100 housing units. And this is going, that planning is going along in a parallel path that we are well-aware of and working with everyone on. If you look into the details of that, you'll note that 100% of that was envisioned, would be most beneficial if they were all affordable housing units. Well, we're being frank that that seems more theoretical than real. Imagine that every single housing unit to be constructed for the next 20 years is affordable. But the message is clear. How can we think about providing a range of affordable housing types within the mix of units that occur in the future? So in addressing this, we are also alert to the fact that a diverse housing stock that has different types of housing is a fundamental part of having healthy housing stock. There are many, many different studies that show that as, as we all go through our life cycles, there are times when different housing types really fit our needs, and that changes. And so to have a much broader range within Sumamish than exists today is good planning. But increasing the housing production total, as well as a diversified group of building types, is something we're, we're looking closely at already in our planning. We talked about the fact that there's a baseline requirement, an inclusionary requirement for 10% of the units, and density bonuses. But one of the things that we are also alert to is the fact that many communities are being able to provide affordable housing, not by having a percentage of, or a small, relatively small percentage of units being affordable, but affordable housing developments. There's a world of nonprofit housing developments and financial mechanisms and tools. So that is another way. It's not just the tools that you've used in the past. And the city's research on that in the Housing Diversification Workbook is, is part of the planning and research, preparing that groundwork. And we are keeping an eye in, in the planning for the expansion of opportunities for locally serving retail businesses and expanding employment. So the horizon that was built into the zoning was for 600,000 square feet of those kinds of uses eventually. And we are working to align all of those potential horizons through the environmental impact statement process, zoning, and the code amendments that will come along. Now, as many of you have seen and experienced, the zoning is complicated here. That's the technical word, I guess. It's just plain complicated, with lots of different subzones and lots of different requirements and an extensive process for figuring things out. But the types of units that are going to be most amenable to providing for affordability because they're efficient to develop are the higher-density buildings. And there are certain limited number of zones, some of which are the zones where the current phasing and new development is coming along. That's where the affordable housing would presumably be most advantageous to provide within the overall town center. So it's, it's really not a one-size-fits-all circumstance, and it's a highly varied, as you were just talking about, this is hilly, heavily featured, topographically challenging places, as well as having the zoning overlay. One of the benefits in planning for an emerging district of this type is to actually have some consolidated ownership. If it were split into many, many tiny parcels, it would be very hard to begin developing and creating the balance of public amenities, open space, dense housing, and mixed use. So we are alert to the fact that there are property owners that have specific and different interests among themselves, certainly. But we have a discrete number of places and owners that we need to be taking into account. There are opportunities to leverage your own ownership in land. And other cities are doing this in innovative ways. This is land and undeveloped, or in some cases, perhaps even developable, land areas that can be used in, in a number of different ways to incentivize, to draw the kinds of affordability in housing development. And we will be taking a look at that. But you, you are a player in shaping the future of the district. And innovative real estate thinking and reorganizing land and providing kinds of opportunities to get the kinds of uses that make the most sense is a, an unusual and very promising part of what the big picture is here. The transportation infrastructure, there's been some significant improvements since the original plan. Certainly, fourth has been completely restructured. And overall, looking at the city, like many other suburban areas, where there's a high concentration of high-technology folks, people are not using their cars the way they did 10 years ago. People are working from home much more. They're taking flexible hours. They're moving around when traffic is not as bad. So we're not seeing the rise in congestion that we would have thought would have occurred with the growth in the past. Nevertheless, there are some real challenges here, including how to make connecting roads work, how to expand the number of intersections near the center and within the center that can be used to distribute traffic. And an overall challenge that this is in the center of the city, where your, the edges of your city are where many of the congested points are. It can be difficult to get to. So as we approach all of this and set things up for the future, we wanted to go through a thought exercise with you a bit about how to think about the economics of development and what your role is in that. If you take a look at this balance, if there were no special requirements of, of any sort that, that added cost to development, and you're in a great community where it's really valuable to sell or rent space, developers can get a revenue premium. They can make a fair amount of money if there aren't constraints on them. And that is what drives and has driven the real estate market. But as you begin to add requirements, those requirements may be affordable units. We want, want the developer to subsidize affordable units, or provide mitigation for off-site impacts. What you're doing is reducing the revenue that's available, the excess revenue, the profitability. And you can do that up to a point. But what happens in some communities is the list of things that are found to be really important and really desirable becomes so large that they actually make projects no longer feasible at all. It looks good on paper, because look at all the things the developer can, community can provide, but they can't. TDR payments, housing units. And one of the things we'll talk about is the fact that the process itself, if it adds lack of predictability and it takes a long time, that's a cost. So what, the job is to try to figure out where that balance point is. Now, among the list, and on the, the list is actually not complete in terms of the list of amenities and public expenditures and benefits that Sumamish has built into some of its processes here, how to get that balance so that the, it works. And the idea of giving a density bonus is rebalancing, right? What it's doing, it's giving profitable opportunity for profitable types of housing units, for example, in exchange for all those good stuff on the other side. So if you increase the bonuses, there's a point where you can rebalance everything. And we are going to be working with our real estate economists, doing models to understand this. One of the easiest things, and what we're going to work hard on, is making the review and approval process simpler, more clear. It doesn't benefit anybody to have it be complicated, confusing, and long. So by doing that, there's an opportunity to provide more of the other benefits. But if we dramatically expand the additional affordable housing units on this balance, it can result in a negative outcome. There's just, there's a kind of an adjustment. And what we're going to point to is the idea that not all of the benefits and amenities are going to fit on the scale, and you may need to reduce some of the other things that you're providing for. So if you reduce the amount of incentive with TDRs, for example, that could be, in exchange, a greater increase in the affordable housing units that you could seek. But the other thing the city can do is proactively put development aids on the side of the development itself by, for example, providing some off-site infrastructure, using financing tools that municipalities uniquely have to leverage certain kinds of projects and affordable housing. So the things that you can proactively do by, by helping on the development side for things to move ahead, and in exchange for that, getting substantially more affordable housing. So our challenge is to really understand how these things work together, come up with scenarios over the next few months, showing how that balance could work, and then asking your guidance among the priorities that could be set, where you would like to head, so that we have a pragmatic outcome and not a theoretical outcome to what we're doing. And I think that touches on all of the points we wish to make.
So with that, we'll pass it on back to the mayor and open it up for questions.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Steve. All right, Council. Councilmember O'Farrell.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. I had a, it was really, I got a lot out of the Planning Commission meeting that you had on the 15th. That was really interesting, and I want to thank the Planning Commission for their hard work on that. That was a long meeting and very detailed. Not only did they do this, they did TDRs as well, which I have yet to watch the back half of that meeting. And I'm going to go back and do that tomorrow. So that was very informative to kind of see your presentation for the second time and to kind of hear their discussions and their questions. And I kind of wanted to reuse, if you like, one of the suggestions by Vice Chair Brasco, when he was asking for definitions of those options. Like, what is a list of those options when we look at that seesaw scale? What are all the options open to us? And what, and how would you define them? Give us, I would like kind of a detail of how I would define all those, because there's probably tons of options there that I would never even think of. But it would be nice to kind of have a list and kind of know what the definitions are behind that. That would kind of help inform me. And then the other thing that would help is kind of understanding what kind of public input you've received, what, what public input maybe we've received from the open house we did not that long ago, and what we've received from the public, and how are the public viewing this? Are they confused about our growth target and our housing allocation as the rest of us are? In some ways, having the same number for both targets is very confusing. And so having that better explained as to how that fits in with all of this would be very useful for me. And I think that was really everything. It was just kind of taking some of the jargon out of this and explaining it in more plain language so that it's kind of more digestible to me, so we could figure out some of these tools, how usable they are, and maybe what kind of results we may get from them. And then making it understandable so that we can really make better decisions on that. So that was really my thoughts. And again, I want to thank the Planning Commission. I learned a lot from it, and I'll probably go back and re-watch it again. So thank you so much.
Start off with the question about the choices. That's, that's what we are beginning to do. But I'll give you a broad picture of how I think that's going to go. And it comes out of that discussion about the balance points. One option would be to say, if we just sort of re-up the system that we had, added some more bonusable units, given the kind of market structure and cost of housing and densities and all the rest of it, how much could we produce in terms of affordability? Just, let's, let's say it's a pretty good system. It's worked, worked, you know, some. So the next, the next idea would be to take a look at actually reducing some of the amenities and other kinds of things that are being paid for. For example, maybe, maybe not having TDR, so that you can maximize the amount of subsidies going to affordable housing, to, to expand the affordable housing. So maybe less of other things and more affordable housing. The third track is to look at what the city could proactively do to change the equation by looking at what it could contribute to infrastructure costs, for example, what it could contribute through the use of its property, ownership, and its own entrepreneurial capabilities. So there's, stay with what you've got, reduce some things, engrave some others, or actually take a more proactive role in the whole process. Which one of those approaches would produce the most net benefit in terms of affordable housing and be acceptable? And I don't know the answer to that yet.
Okay. And then the other thing that, and Kelly, you had mentioned it, at Planning Commission, was lessons learned from the existing plan and how it has, now that we have this time to stand back from it, how it played out, how it worked, what was good, what was not, what we would change. And we're at that nice junction where we can do that. And it would be great to hear about lessons learned that would help inform our decision. You know, when we look back at what the council back in 2008, 2004 were envisioning, and how did that really play out? It might help us moving forward to kind of take those lessons learned with us, so.
Yeah, I can give a high-level response to that, because there's definitely been a lot of lessons learned over the last 13 years. And I've gotten to personally experience some of those myself. Big lesson, it's a great plan, and it's a great start to the development regulations. I think one of the biggest positives to come out of this was the affordable housing bonus pool, and how much that was an incentive to build additional affordable housing above the 10% requirement, because that has been exhausted. It is no longer available, because it was, lack of a better term, gobbled up by all the developers to get to their maximum density. Contrary to that, the only way to get to maximum density today is TDRs. And that barrier is currently, and we're going to be speaking a little bit more about this next week, is our inter-local agreement with King County. There are no more TDRs. Those have been purchased. All of those have been purchased. Our STCA has the first right of refusal on the remaining TDRs. So it really limits... So it really limits development opportunity for anyone else, because they can't pencil out their project because they can't build to maximum density. So that's a lesson learned. And we're going to be, again, like I said, on next Tuesday, be talking about the TDR program and really how that can be improved. The code, and our city attorney, Carrie Sant, has received my hour-long presentation on how to calculate density in the town center. And I think she regrets the day she may have asked how that was done. But to calculate density in the town center, it requires an advanced degree, and it does not need to be that complicated. And that is one area of improvement. Our UZDP process, it's an agreement. What is the value? Right now, it's, on average, with the three developments that are built today, it was an hour, or sorry, a year-long process to get an approved UZDP, and it's not even an entitlement. Those projects did have to go through the entitlement and building process. So it took years from concept to occupancy. And that really does impact affordability. That's a lot of money, and especially in a market where we're not seeing interest rates change, that impacts construction. So we really have to understand, what are we trying to achieve and how can we get there more efficiently? And it's okay to ask the questions. It may have started out as a really good idea to assure we were meeting all the goals and policies of our town center plan, but was that benefit, was that really a benefit or did that actually come with some challenges? So it's that balancing act that we need to consider. I am sure I can come up with a whole longer list, and I will definitely put more thought into that so we can provide those lessons learned. But I would say those are probably the top three takeaways for the last 13 years? Am I doing my math right? Yep, 13 years since that development code was adopted.
Deputy Mayor Howe.
Thank you. I have a couple of strange, far-ranging types of questions, which is so helpful, I know. So for, I know that we have talked about getting an economist to help us understand better how this could play out. Do we have a timeline for that?
Yes, we are working on that. Over the next, of course, the next two, two and a half months is when the core of that work will be done.
Oh, really? Okay, good.
The existing conditions, first draft arrived on my desk today from Kidder Matthews, just to set the parameters that will be used in what we call pro forma analysis. And we're going to look at development feasibility as though, as a developer would look at it, to try to understand those things. And those scenarios that we talked about will be modeled using realistic assumptions about what the densities might be to establish what feasibility points there are likely to be, and then what kind of room you may have. There's one thing I want to add to this, and this is important, when we come, we're looking at a market that has certain characteristics today.
Is this a snapshot in time, or is this a trend and projection?
Well, this is where, this is where I'm going to get to. It will be a kind of a snapshot, but then what we do is a kind of sensitivity testing. Interest rates aren't going to stay where they are forever. For all we know, they could go up, but they're more likely to go down. When you're looking at land planning, it's not as though you're developing all this land all at once. It's a long-term strategy to set in place circumstances that may take several years to really trigger, to have all the pieces come together. So we're going to be looking at a snapshot, but then we test the snapshot as variables about how this could work over time. And it's a very interesting process.
Okay, kind of around that question, I know that Redmond had projects in mind for around the Overlake area, and they had some very specific requirements that they had assigned for affordable housing. The, you know, talk was that, oh, they'll never get that because it's so strict and so, such a burden. And Redmond has said, oh, no, we'll get that because the land is so valuable. So I'm curious, is there any update on that from you guys or something similar that you know about? Because I'm curious, because getting back to your fulcrum and balance, right, image, when is it too much, when is it too little, that getting that balance right? I'm looking to other cities that are in the exact same positions that we are, that are trying to evaluate, what do they put on which side of the scale to make it attractive enough? Now, you know, we have a reputation for being extremely difficult when it comes to building. There are a lot of builders that will not ever build here because we're not predictable. Our history has been that way. So does, does what we're working on now, does it provide that level or assurance of predictability that make, that count in the plus column?
Yeah, the revisions in the code, the complexities that Kelly was talking about are all designed to do that. It's really no benefit to anyone to have confusing, difficult, time-consuming outcomes that are unpredictable. So we hope to really make things much more clear. If you want a certain kind of development, be clear about that and let people do that. But I think that the thing that's really important and why we had the economics team do some benchmarking, is the answers are different for every city. If you're a very desirable community with lots of amenities and a bright future like Samamish, the opportunities are very different from a community that is struggling in different ways. So you may be in a relatively strong position, but if you misjudge it, this has often happened in cities, then you will have on the books fantastic requirements for affordable housing and no more affordable housing.
No takers.
Yeah, that can really happen.
So to that point, as I look at things, I look at the advantages of taking a more aggressive stance as a city and to figure out ways to take control of whatever we can, which would mean investment on our part, whether that is financial bonding or actual, you know, gifting of land or what have you. So that is my bias, is to head in that direction, because I think it sends a clear signal to the market that we're serious about this, we want to do it right, and here's our criteria, and look what we're doing.
Yeah, that's going to be one of those choice directions that we're going to go down that path, and look at what you could practically do.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. I just, I just want to go back to what Kelly was saying about the bonus pools. So it's been depleted. Can we not issue like a new, I don't know, round of bonus pools? We can.
Absolutely. You can definitely consider that as part of this code update.
Okay. I also watched the planning commission meeting, which I found extremely helpful, and I appreciate their work. There was a whole lot of discussion on the commercial part of it, and I'm kind of, I'm interested in that. Out of the 200,000 square footage, how much have we currently, is in use and permitted?
I will need to follow up with the exact number, because off the top of my head, I want, I can't tell you off the top of my head. I am going to follow up, I can follow up with an email and let you know how much has been built.
Okay. I was just curious, is it like half or, I don't know?
No, we're not there yet. I think we're at a, maybe at a third.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, and it's an incentive for building affordable homes compared to like TDRs and density bonuses, like, how much of an incentive is the commercial? Is it like more than the TDRs? Like, I'm just trying to get an idea.
In terms of providing commercial space as an incentive, it tends to be disincentive.
A disincentive?
Yeah, it's not, I mean, there is certainly a demand for certain kinds of retail here that has been shown and established, but the retail market in suburban areas like this is not turning out to be as deep as once thought. Retailing has changed. And highway-oriented retailing still is favored relative to this kind of destination place. What's still unknown is whether commercial office and the potential for development, where the location decisions are really complicated and not directly associated with location in ways you might think. That's still untested, but the market for office space and the market for retail is not strong.
Okay, okay. That's interesting to hear. So I know, you know, we don't know what kind of applications that we're going to get, but are a lot of them tied to housing? Like, are they five over two? So, you know, there aren't that many standalone, you know, commercial?
Yes. So the recent applications, one that we're reviewing right now, which is Phase One, submitted by STCA, that is a mixture of townhomes and five-over-one. They do have one block that is just commercial. They did submit their Phase Two application, I believe that was noticed last week, and that also, I believe, is a five-over-one development in the southwest quadrant, just north of the Lower Commons Park. Brownstone West has obviously been approved. We've had a lot of conversations about Brownstone West, that is town center, or townhouse development, so attached. We have not received any applications for single-family residential, and that's actually one of the building types we're going to discuss as part of this update. What are the appropriate building typologies in the town center? And take a look at that as part of this work as well.
So one of the other things that we're looking at, or we're experimenting with, with the Phase One UZDP, and that would be the Brownstones East, is the concept of some live-work units that are strategically placed on corners to allow for
What is that?
A live-work unit?
Live work.
Which basically is somebody could have their, they could have an accountant office, if you will, or some type of a lower space need-type office or service, and they could live above it. They could own the unit, own the retail storefront. And we've had some conversations with STCA about that, and they, they're really interested in trying that out as a concept, but they weren't really ready to commit, because the thing that they told us, and similar to what Steve said, that requiring commercial and requiring pedestrian-oriented commercial and requiring it in certain spaces is very difficult because it's unpredictable, and you don't know if you'll be able to fill it, and there's nothing worse than an empty building. So they, that they noted is a big barrier to producing affordability, is that if you're required to build this commercial space and you can't fill it, that's a huge cost that you can't recover. So that's added on to the overall project costs. So we just wanted to be aware of that.
I do want to add, and I think this will be interesting to see with their Phase One development application, is that that is adjacent to the mixed-use development, where there is a high concentration of retail. So we may see an interest in those live-work units as part of Brownstone East. And I do want to note that Ichijo, kitty corner to us, has seven work-live units. And I know the follow-up question I'm going to receive is how many of those are occupied commercial space? And I will follow up with an answer to that one as well, because I don't know offhand. But, you know, it's a development, it's a townhome development that does offer these work-live units, but it's not connected or surrounded by any other retail. So it will be really interesting to see the market reaction to those, and that could be, you know, we may want to see more of that, especially around our A zones, that type of development. So more to come, and I will follow up on that question I asked myself, but I'm sure others have too.
Thank you. All the responses were very helpful. Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
Great, thank you so much. Do we require commercial space? Because I thought that the amount of like residential and commercial spaces, it's what's available. Do we actually require it to be developed?
We have, we have commercial space allocated to each of the A zones, but it is, I'm not sure how you would say if it's required, but it, yeah. Oh, sorry, okay. Yes, it's required because the streets require that pedestrian-oriented use, which is retail space or spaces that enliven the street. So you can't get that with homes.
Got it.
So by that, that would be part of the code we do want to look at, because that's very confusing when it doesn't say in the density and dimensions table that you're required to have this percentage of commercial space. So, but because of the other zoning controls, that would require the commercial space or retail space to be built in the A zones.
Great, okay. Well, that wasn't one of my planned questions, but that just came up. So you kind of asked a set of questions. So I love the visuals, and I love the planning commission, I love the visuals of the balance. And I love that we're going to try to find that, what's the most we can get and offer, you know, sort of the least amount of profit to make it happen, right? So just to clarify, nobody here is trying to do the bidding of developers. We're trying to get the benefits and the results that we need. And just to put it all in perspective, Samamish is about 3% of the population of King County. Our affordable housing target is 0.8% of what King County needs over the same 20-year period. So we're not even keeping up with our own percentage of population. And then just to throw out there another number, 31% of our current population are 19 or under. So when we think about building homes that cost less than 100% AMI, who are we building that for? The humans that we created, that's who. Because they're not going to be able to afford 100 or above AMI in the next 20 years. Like, that's just not the reality. And so when I look at the balance and how we look forward, I want to make sure that any additional space that we offer, whether it be residential or commercial, comes with, I guess you'd call it strings attached, right? I want to make sure that there are requirements, or they're only offered as incentives to create affordable housing or needed civic spaces or other community benefits. And I'm assuming that that's what we're doing, but you kind of asked, what did we want to see and what is that? So to me, that's what this is about, right? Is that we have, we have this opportunity to build over the next 20 to 40 years, something for our future generations, and what does that need to be, and what are all those needs that are going to need to be taken care of? So that's what I'd like to see. And we heard in public comment places like a garage and crosspath, right? Like, those are, those are potential retails or commercial spaces that, you know, we, I don't know if that's considered part of that commercial, but that, those feel like commercial-type spaces that we might want to fill. Maybe we call them civic spaces, but they're not residential. So I really want to see that. I also want to make sure that we can clarify, and I know this isn't directly related to the town center plan, but to clarify, for the community, some of the impacts, right? So we've heard a lot of comments about like HB 1110, and we've talked anecdotally about how, I think you said the other night, David, it's like 80 or 90% of our, of our land outside of the town center is covered by HOAs that are not going to allow that. So being able to share that information and frame it up as part of when we talk about this, so that people understand that those types of things are not going to create additional demand outside of, or opportunities outside of the town center. And I think that's really important. And I'd love to see, as we talk about this and we talk about affordability, to also talk about the sustainability pieces, right? There is nothing worse for the environment than a bunch of single-family homes on a cul-de-sac. So personally, I would like to see no single-family homes in the town center zones. I don't know if that's really feasible, but I, it wouldn't break my heart if that was something that we saw as we move forward on this. Just because from a cost perspective, from an infrastructure perspective, from an environmental perspective, that's bad, and we need more of the other. I know this is a little bit outside of the town center zone, but it's part of the whole comp plan update. Can we look at, well, it's all related. I know we have to be careful about what we require in terms of affordable housing, but I think you even brought it up back in October, Deputy Mayor Howe, about Redmond, one of their lessons learned to us was they wish they had required more. So right now, we have a 10% requirement. That would be one of the things I'd love to see, is can we up that? How far can we push that in terms of affordable housing? And then can we look at outside of the town center zones having affordable housing requirements, right? Right now, the only place we require affordable housing is in the town center zone. Can we have a 10% requirement across the board? And if you're building less than 10 houses, then you have to make a contribution to affordable housing, to arch or something, right? I'd love to see that. I think that that is, again, something that will not only help us get more I think that that is, again, something that will not only help us get more affordable housing, but maybe disincentivize building things outside of the town center that aren't going to be as beneficial to the community. And I think, I think that was it. Thank you.
Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I know, I saw you mentioned the TDR program as a potential barrier to affordable housing, because, again, from what I understand, the King County TDR program does not have an affordability tie-in. So, I know we're looking at both the King County ILA and a separate TDR program within the city. If we do choose to explore an affordability component to that, I want to make sure that we're looking at that in that, in that balance, where TDRs go from being a barrier to being an incentive. And, you know, we're not planning for TDRs to be getting in the way when, you know, five months down the line, we're planning for TDRs to then be a bonus to incentivize affordable housing. So, that was just something I wanted to make sure we keep in mind. Thanks.
And one thing I'd like to know on TDRs, and we've been having quite a few conversations with King County and exploring the affordability piece, that may be a challenge, because developers have to purchase the TDRs, and then to add that affordability requirement, again, you may not be getting that development project to pencil out. But one thing, and I think, again, is it, is looking at, if TDRs are going to help you meet that maximum density, what is that density made up of? And that's where we look at those housing typologies. So, if we're looking at typologies like apartment units, or cottage housing, or townhomes, from a market perspective, those will always be less expensive than the single-family market. So, we want to keep that in mind. It may not give us that affordability piece, and we are still committed to looking into that and seeing different options for, to bring back for your consideration. But one thing to keep in mind is it will provide us the diversity, the housing diversity beyond just single-family, which we have plenty of here in Samamish.
In addition to everything Kelly elegantly said, one other consideration, and this is one we're exploring, and I don't know that, whether this is fully feasible or not, but the, what I've been hearing more and more is that we need to think about affordable housing, or housing affordability, or housing in general, as infrastructure. And that, you know, we, we pay a lot of attention to building roads, and pipes, and parks, and trails, and all those things, but we need to think about building housing as well. One of the aspects or components of the interlocal agreement is that it has, provides a kickback, if you will, back to the city for the sale of TDRs, and that the use of those funds is somewhat constrained for the purpose of acquiring parks amenities, or other amenities, or infrastructure. And is there the opportunity to use that kickback for another purpose of applying that towards pooled funding for affordable housing projects in the town center? That's, that's just one we've been looking at, and we don't know if that, those funds are so constrained that we can't do that, but we'll be, we'll be reporting back to you on whether that's something feasible we could consider.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Trane?
Thank you, Mayor. So, everything I've heard so far tonight leads me to the position that we should work on moving forward of stopping, changing anything about the town center plan going forward. I would spend no more money, of the taxpayers' money, to continue looking at planning for housing in the town center. With that being said, since I now sit with a different outcome above me, first, the gentleman in the middle, your name is again?
Steve Cecil.
Hi, Steve Cecil, Kent Trane, Samami City Council. It's nice to meet you. You made a few comments during your presentation. First one was, there was information was, some good information was exchanged with the open house. So, I'm curious as to what that information was that was exchanged at the inner, open house? If you could provide that for me, that'd be awesome, because I'd like to compare it to the information that I exchanged with residents and stakeholders at the open house, and just see if, if they are similar, or where they are similar and where they're different. So, that'd be great. Second is, if you'd be so kind, Steve, is to please email the slide deck to me. I would appreciate that as well. You also said in your presentation that you've seen a lot of studies, that you've seen studies on diverse housing types, that communities and community leaders have, and I'm going to paraphrase here, because I don't re, I was trying to write down as fast as I could, but have spearheaded housing diversity. And so, I'm, I would be curious to know what those studies are, that there are studies out there that benefit, that certain types of housing diversity benefits communities, that it makes it so, first, I believe you even used the word sustainability, that it helps with sustainability. Maybe that's something I put in there, but, but what, but the idea was, you mentioned that, you can go back and look at the tape and just say, whatever, you know, there were some studies you referenced. I'd be curious as to what those studies are, and I'd like to look at them. At a really high level, according to the GMA, the city of Samamish is not required, or it's not mandated, that we create a diverse housing for everyone. That is just not even mandated. And then, so until the law changes, until, until our Congress or legislators say that the GMA is going to change, it's, we, the residents, with the leadership, the community leaders that sit here on this board, are the ones that make the decision as to the character and the type of things that are zoned and built in the city. And until that's taken away from us, we have every right, as a council, to determine the direction in which we believe the residents, who we represent, want us to go. With that being said, I think if you, if you change the law of the current TDR program, it would benefit the development. And whether that's something we want to do or not do would be our decision. Hearing you say, David Pyle, that, that to change what it was intended for and where that money comes from, I might be a little confused, but initially, my thinking and understanding on TDRs, just on a certain level, I'm not an expert at it, but is that it's to preserve lands, and that would not be developed. So, if I get a piece of cash from, so are you saying that if I get a piece of, that money that they spent, I could then, instead of building a park, or providing open space and enhancing that, I turn it to affordable housing? Is that what you are saying, as a possibility, or is that something you're going to look into?
That is something we're, something similar to that. So, the, the kickback, if you will, the funding that's provided back to the city from the county as part of the sale of TDRs, is to be used for the purpose of, of investing in infrastructure, and investing in amenities. So, what I was highlighting is that there's, there's currently been a, you know, in the planning world and regionally, a rethink about what housing is considered to be, and housing is broadly being considered now as infrastructure. And that, under that premise, is that, you know, something that is, that is worth investing in using that funding? It's a, it's a policy question for the council. We first want to understand whether legally you can do that.
Yeah.
Then, second, we would be asking the council to weigh in on as to if that's appropriate.
Yeah, is housing infrastructure, that's a, I don't have an answer for that. That's clear. Question, so, those are kind of my high-level things that I was thinking about, because, I mean, I have some, just some opinions about some stuff, but one, I have a question of clarification, because I, I thought that we, that the city, that we have the ability to build affordable housing outside the town center. Like, I think I put a permit in for one.
We, well, we have the ability to build diverse housing outside of town center. We also have the ability to build affordable housing outside of town center. And in fact, the city's development regulations, the non-town center development regulations, include several incentives for building in the 80% AMI. For example, if you build a duplex on a corner lot, it counts as one unit. If you were to build two duplexes on a corner lot that are affordable, they count as one unit. So, those are the types of incentives that we have, that we don't really see being used, but maybe we need to market them a little better. Another one is that with density, if you have a partial unit of density, you can round up, as long as the unit that's created from rounding up is built as an affordable unit in the 80% AMI. So, there are some incentives outside of town center to build affordable units. There is not a requirement to build a certain number of houses, if you will, in a division that are affordable.
And when I, I mean, if the council were to choose or to pass policy, that would open up or change the zoning and other business areas that already are asphalt, concrete, and steel, would have a low impact on the environment, wouldn't we have the ability then to require that they be affordable housing on those types of developments as well?
So, if we were to go through the sub-area planning process to repurpose existing asphalt, as we've discussed with this council previously, that is something that we're contemplating with the comprehensive plan. However, the sub-area planning process could take some number of years down the line. Yes, you absolutely would be able to utilize many of the tools included in the housing diversification toolkit, such as zoning controls, concomitant agreements, other, and it's actually a great opportunity, because as you're upzoning that area, or allowing that, that additional housing to happen, you can layer in restrictions or incentives, or requirements and incentives to, to get some additional affordability with those projects.
Thank you, David Pyle.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and for all the comments so far. Yeah, I think, I guess I couldn't, unless you guys can help me out, that there's a city that isn't running into this problem, that isn't having the issue that we all are?
I'm not aware of any...
A different country, maybe? Yeah.
I would say that, that on a different level, there are different types of challenges. One challenge that we have that is somewhat unique is the, the lack of larger public investment in, in major transportation infrastructure. You know, we, we regionally have made decisions as to where to put light rails, and bus rapid transit, and make highway investments, and freeway investments, and there are some classic examples out there, like Hunts Point, Medina, where they received a freeway lid on Highway 520. And whether or not that was a good use of public funds, I mean, I'm not, who am I to judge? But, but, you know, that, that, that is a good example, yet they are not, at the same time, given an affordable housing allocation like Samamish is. So, it's, it's a challenge. So, different cities, different challenges. Samamish's challenge, I think, is trying to make sense of what incentives we can offer, and what investments on the counterbalance that you saw, the graphic that I really liked that Steve put together, is, on the one side, it's that public investment side. Well, are we having to do more in public investment than other cities that are recipients of large-scale transportation infrastructure projects? Right? So, so it's that, it's that balance that we have to consider. What else can we do that might not be a multi-billion-dollar light rail, right? You know, so...
And if I can just add to that, it's also the planning work, and I, I think the transit plan that was presented to you tonight is a step in that right direction. Because when you're starting to look at this density, you have to look at other, other impacts, and, and how we're going to mitigate for that. And I think the transit plan is a really great start, so, nice job, Public Works.
They left.
Oh, damn. Someone, yeah, let's get on there. Thank you, Public Works, for the transcript.
No, I appreciate that. I think, I mean, because when I just look at that, I'm like, I like the idea of, if, was it Commissioner Brusco you said that, said about the definitions? Because when I look at that, I'm like, what are these? What are we doing? So, I know you're coming back, I guess, to planning commission first, and then to us with, like, some great ideas of what that can look like, because obviously, squares and rectangles doesn't really, is not like penciled-out numbers.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm mostly looking forward to that, because even just seeing this, I'm like, I still don't know what to do. Like, we have great ideas. Everyone has great, but I'm like, I'm still lost, so...
Yeah.
That doesn't need a comment, I guess, but somebody can follow that up, yeah.
We're going to get there.
Great, yeah. No, I really appreciate this. So, you'll be back in May for planning commission, and then to us? Is that right? Awesome.
That is correct.
Cool.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot to ask, I'm assuming, but I shouldn't assume, that, like, right now, our requirement is 10% affordable units, but only, only has to be to the 80% AMI. So, are we also considering, or maybe I can frame it differently, you ask, what are we looking for? I'm looking for more deeply affordable, right? That we're going to need to find ways to get more deeply affordable, at least the 30 to 50, or the 50, right? And not just down to 80. So, I'd love to look at that. And, and I do feel like we have this opportunity, because short of us just paying for it, and I love Deputy Mayor's ideas of, you know, what can we do to invest? But even if we do invest, we don't have the funds to invest at the level that we need to, to develop the amount of affordable housing we need to. So, what we do have is we do have this sort of magic ability to offer these bonuses through additional housing units right now, that is, in a way, a once-in-a, I don't even want to say a lifetime, it's like multi-generational opportunity to have this asset that we can sort of trade on and get what our community is going to need, not just for today, but for the next 20 to 40 years, and maybe even beyond. So, I just want to make sure we get to see that more deeply affordable factored in, and what that does. I know you're going to run all the numbers, and that's going to be really important. And I'm hoping we're going to see different combinations on the little, I like the teeter-totter, right? Like, if we do this, this is what it does, and to kind of see those different options, so we can see what kinds of combinations and permutations will give us what we think we need to, to have for the, the community going forward. And if any, you know, to the mayor's point, I'm pretty sure all the cities around, King County right now needs 156,000 affordable units right now, today. So, I think we're all feeling it. Thanks.
Great. Well, thank you so much, everyone. Thanks for being here. You guys will be, we were going to take a quick break, if that's okay? Because I think it'll be, or I need a break really fast, if that's okay? But I think next up, we have our resolution for the regional agenda, and then you will be back. Okay? Awesome. All right, so, five minutes, 9:23-ish? We'll be right back. Thank you.
Under the affordable housing, there's a bullet that says, "Explore ways to further incentivize affordable housing projects in the town center and on publicly owned lands at commercial and transit nodes." That is a fine statement. I think the part that's missing for me is that we don't also say at our other commercial centers, right? So I would think we would want to incentivize affordable housing in town center, on publicly owned lands, and in our other centers. So I just want to throw, I don't want to wordsmith it, but I was, I would like to say, could we add that on that statement? And then I think it kind of encompasses everything we're looking for.
Mike, I'm getting head nods. Did you catch that?
That's good, Mike. We'll do that in real time.
Would you like me to make the edits on the screen here? Would that be helpful?
No, I think we can, if council, if council's okay, I think we can just take the edit and add it in as, on the attachment for the resolution.
Perfect.
Did you have anything else? All good? Anybody else? Awesome. All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024-1045.
So moved.
Second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Great, well, thank you so much, Mike, and thank you to all the council members putting that together. Yeah, really excited to have this, so thank you all. All right, back to David. So we have new business, approval of the 2021 Washington State Building Code updates.
Great, good evening, Mayor, again, council. With me tonight, I have Avril Beatty, our permit center and current planning manager, and Brian Kirkland, our building services manager. You may not have met Brian yet, but Brian is, has been with the city for, I want to say, what? Nine years, 10 years?
Eleven.
Eleven years. And, and he says casually, and, and he, he has taken over the lead as our building services manager for our building group. We hear a lot of compliments regarding our building inspectors and their, their ability to work with, with builders in really difficult situations. So we really appreciate the work that Brian does. And tonight, we have for you a brief presentation on our building code updates and then an ordinance for your consideration. There is no public hearing required for this adoption. We've checked with Carrie to make sure, so we don't have to do a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Brian Kirkland, building services manager here in Department of Community Development. So as David said, we come here tonight with a topic of building codes. And so in this presentation, this brief presentation, I will give a little background.
Quick, quick pause. We're, bear with us while we get our slide deck posted. Thank you.
There it is. Okay. So the topic is building codes, update and adoption. So, so tonight, I'll give a little, a little background as to, as to why we're here and, and why we're talking about updates and building code adoptions. So the Washington State Building Code Act was, created the Washington State Building Code Council in the 1970s, and its purpose is to promote health, safety, and welfare of the public by the provision of the building codes. These codes are generally updated every three years. Having some technical difficulty.
For those watching online, bear with us, we're having a technical issue with the slide presentation. There we go.
Okay, we'll back up a little. Okay, now we have it back up on the screen. So the Washington State Building Code Act created the, the Washington State Building Code Council, and its purpose is to, is to create the health, safety, is to promote safety and the welfare of the public by the provision of the building codes. These building codes are generally updated every three years. So the Washington State Building Code Council, the SBCC, adopts and amends the model codes created by the International Code Council, known as the ICC Model Codes, that the jurisdictions administer and which must be adopted by local jurisdictions. This adoption, every three years, is mandatory and includes, by reference, the codes related to residential and commercial construction, the mechanical systems, plumbing systems, fire protection, and energy efficiency. You may have heard these, International Building Code, the International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fire Code, and so forth. Local amendments, local amendments are allowed in the administration of the building code, but those amendments may not be less restrictive. And no changes are allowed that may affect the residential code without submitting those amendments to the State Building Code Council. As far as timing, normally, these building codes are updated every three years, but the, they were disrupted for the first time in a series during, during COVID in 2020. And so the cycle started of delay and delay. And so this current code cycle, which is the 2021 building codes, has also been delayed. The first delay was in May of 2023. The State Building Code Council delayed the effective date to October 29th, 2023. And that was due to some legal uncertainty and legal challenges regarding primarily the energy codes, the Washington State Energy Codes. And then, again, there was a further delay in September of 2023, which delayed those codes again to March 15th, due to those same legal challenges. The code updates, the actual building code updates, the major code changes have been detailed for you and can be seen in Exhibit 1, Attachment A. We, there we have highlighted some of the major changes to the building codes, the fire code, the energy and electrical codes, and their potential impacts to construction here in the city of Sammamish. The effective dates, March 15th, per State Building Code Council mandate, March 15th, the building codes will go into effect. March 15th, the administrative changes to Sammamish Municipal Code that staff has, has seen, seen fit to, to amend and to change also will go into effect March 15th. And April 1st of this year, the electrical code will also go into effect. And so tonight, the action we're looking for is the approval of the proposed ordinance with Attachment A, adopting the 2021 Washington State Building Codes Amendments, amending Sammamish Municipal Code under Chapter 1605, the construction codes, and Chapter 1620, the construction administrative code. And the recommended motion is adopt the proposed ordinance with Attachment A. So with that, if you have any questions for myself or Avril or David, we'll be glad to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you. I do like the other alternatives considered, that it would be out of compliance with state law. So if anyone has any questions or would like to make that motion, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, one quick question, and then I'll make the motion. Because I know we have to make these, so we're going to. But will these be anything, David, that we're going to be looking at as part of the comp plan and, and updates that we're doing this year? Or would this be something, if we wanted to make them more restrictive, that would be in the future?
So we would need to set the policy foundation now with the comp plan in order to then take that on going forward, if we wanted to, to do that. And I think that'd be a really good place to analyze and to get feedback from the community on what implication that might bring to the cost of something, et cetera, right? Things we've talked about here.
Yeah, excellent. I'm just thinking, you know, environmental standards and green ball. Okay, excellent. I would like to move that we approve the proposed ordinance with Attachment A, adopting the 2021 WSBC Amendments, Amending Sammamish Municipal Code, Chapter 16.05 Construction Codes, and Chapter 16.20 Construction Administrative Code.
Second. All right, moved and seconded. Did you have a comment on that one?
I just had a quick question. Can you clarify the EV charging station code? It reads required EV parking and their, EV parking and the required stall count. What is that?
Yes, so that is a, a change in the IBC, in the building code, which deals primarily with commercial construction. And so that code change is, requires that, that there be 10% of the required parking stalls in new construction, that 10% of them be EV, EV ready. Actually, EV, completely EV usable, and then 10% EV ready, which would mean like roughed in electrically, and 10% just partially roughed in, like with conduit and with the boxes, but not necessarily with the wires running. So that, that's, that's that code section. It's, it's requiring now some EV stations to, amending some stations to be, to be put in place in new construction.
Great, thank you.
Great question. All right, so it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, well, thank you. Thanks, Brian. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
I don't know how it's been so long. Thank you. Scott, city manager report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick items. I just want to say thank you to those of you that were made, were able to make it last Friday, too. We were honored to have the consul general from India in the building and reaching out and establishing relationships with Sammamish. That's a fantastic relationship, and we're looking forward to growing and fostering that as we move forward. I want to take a moment to congratulate Krista, who has been hired as our new city clerk in the city of Sammamish. And we're very excited to have her taking that position.
Can we put the camera on her real fast?
But we're super excited to have her. And I won't make her say anything, but I just want to say that we are very pleased to have her continuing on and taking that role as lead of transitions out. I know, she's giving me daggers. That's all right. I can take it. One other quick thing I want to just put on your radar as a reminder, you should have something coming to you, if not already shortly, for a Big Rock Park South partial opening event on Friday, March 22nd. This is opening up the trails to the north of where the current house and barn is, so that we can open up that area. And it will connect through on the pathway to the east side of the property all the way down to Southeast 20th. So I think this is a great connector to our trail system while we come up with the, the funds to try to redevelop the rest of Big Rock South. So looking forward to seeing everybody out there. Please come join us, hoping for good weather. Just going to say that. So back to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lamb?
I just wanted to follow up on a couple of committee meetings that I attended. One was for the Public Issues Committee, and I provided a chart that shows, this is for the homelessness response in King County. I just thought it was really helpful for all of us to see which entity is responsible for what response. It's just, you know, it's a complicated system. And the other one was for a solid waste advisory committee. And one of the big things that we're working on is debris management planning. That is what happens to all the debris when there is a large-scale disaster or just disaster planning in general, and Sammamish doesn't currently have one. And so the solid waste division is working on a template, so to speak, so that all cities will eventually have a plan.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have anything to report or add? Deputy Mayor Howe?
I'll just add really quickly that there's an ETP meeting, so East Side Transportation Partnership meeting this Friday, and we'll be doing a PR, a PSRC, Regional Partnership meeting this Friday, and we'll be doing a PSRC Regional Project Review. So I'll be forwarding that to council when we get the opportunity.
Great. Anybody else?
Not exciting, but we have the GMPB meeting. That's the Growth Management Policy Board. It's a monthly meeting that's coming up this Thursday. There's nothing that we're voting on, so I will, as I always do, share out the slides and notes after that. The PSRC, for those who don't know, Puget Sound Regional Council, they've been doing great, great work, and providing great information. So this is going to have some information on early childhood education. Last month, they did a really great thing on pedestrian safety, which was shockingly not as safe as I thought it was. So anyway, that's coming up, and I haven't seen an agenda for EFER coming up yet, so. Oh, okay.
That makes sense. All right. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Great, thanks, everybody.